Planning and zoning meeting is now in session. It is noted that all the commissioners save for Commissioner Jan Rothke. Being said that, say. Person named Mr. Rogers, Ed Laitis. All the work that. Commissioners. Commissioner Clark. You.
That's very sweet. Thank you.
Move to approval of the November 15, 2023, planning commission agenda.
Move to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye opposed? Not opposed? The minutes are, the agenda is approved, and now we will move to approval of the minutes from the October 25, 2023, planning commission meeting. What discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Blackwell?
I just have a question about the part that it. We have this, this part in the minutes that describes me asking, reading something into the record. And I'm just wondering, when you read something in the record, does it automatically become part of the minutes? Or somebody decide whether it becomes part of the minutes? If it's not part of the minutes, it went where it needed to go. Addressed, at least by the Coastal Resiliency Committee. You know, I don't know what's going to happen after they do their thing with it, but it's, my comments are not part of this minute. As that they were read into the record, so I'm just curious.
Well, I believe.
It's my understanding, the record is the video record, and this is just a supplement.
This is a summation of, of what was said, but I, I agree with Commissioner Brown that it's part of the recorded record, that your, your statement, just like any citizen, because you spoke on behalf as a citizen, so it's part of the, the transcript of the, of the recording of that night. And then for the minutes, it's just a summation of, of your remarks, as if anybody would speak during that time.
Okay, I was just asking really for clarification, especially regarding future meetings, like we read something. Future meetings, we have no lawyer to ask.
Right.
But.
My understanding is that if somebody, for example, wants a copy of the, the recording, they have to actually do that in writing five days, and that would actually reflect any, any conversation, any dialogue that occurred as part of the discourse of the meeting. And then the minutes just are, as I said, the summation, but the entirety of the meeting is recorded. And that's why last night, there was a technical difficulty in regarding, recording the Board of Appeals hearing, and because of that, it looked like, for a moment, the meeting was going to have to be suspended until next time.
Well, like I said, for now, I'm happy that they, they went where they needed to go. The Coastal Resiliency Committee did address issues I was concerned with. It did what I wanted them to do for now. We'll see how everything turns out, but. I just wanted to ask that question. I was curious.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if you recall from our Open Meetings Act, which all of us have had training in, one of the portions said that the commission can decide whether the recording is the official record or a transcript is the official record, and I believe the town has decided for us that it's the, the recording that is the official record.
Commissioner Clerk, do you have any comment on that?
I mean, we don't do transcripts.
Okay, so it's the actual recording that is the official document of the meeting?
Yeah.
Because I think if somebody wants a, a recording of the meeting, they have to pay for the meeting to be transcribed.
Yeah.
Thank you. And now we're open for a public comment on any item on the agenda?
Did we approve the minutes?
Oh, thank you. Do we, do we have approval of the, of the minutes? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Minutes are approved? And now we will move to item number four on the agenda, which is public comment on any item on the agenda. I see nobody present, and we don't have the, Sharon, we don't, Commissioner Clerk, we don't have the capability to take live comments via. No, no. Okay. Well, not seeing anybody present, thankfully. I mean, not any holograms or ghosts, or, we will move on now to the item number five, old business, critical area regulations, the final review, and the town planner has provided, has everybody received a copy, the final, the draft of the critical area ordinance? Aided November 15, 2023? Everybody has a copy? No, it's a 40-page document. The other stuff from the. So now, everybody has a copy. Thank you, Sarah, for providing your copy to Commissioner Weaver. So if you want to, Sarah, do you, is there any comment you want to offer in, in, in the final review of this document incorporating all of the changes?
So I cleaned it up, I reformatted it, and put in all the changes. And I spoke with the Critical Area Commission, and they would like to have it to review so they can give you your feedback. And then you guys can look at that before sending it to the commissioners, so.
Did they give you a, a timeline when they would like to have the document?
It's, it's quite overdue, so they would like it soon, but they were also gracious about it, so. So if we can get it over to them after this meeting, that'll give them time to get you guys' comments. Enjoy your holidays while you wait for them, maybe.
And what, what's the official name of that commission?
The Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission.
Okay. And then their, their format for us, they will review it, do you know what, how, what's the process of the review?
So the, the process for the adoption of the ordinance is that you all will, the, the bones of it is that you approve it, you send it to the town council, they approve it, it goes to the Critical Area Commission, and it has to be approved by them before it's active. So if we add this step in here, which Chris Jakubiec had wanted to add, is you all approve it, we send it to the Critical Area Commission, then they can give comments in case there's any major issues. You get them before everyone's already gone through the process. So you can address any concerns they might have at that time. Then you can make any changes, approve it, and send it to the town council, and they'll approve it, and it'll go to Critical Area Commission, and it will get approved more quickly that way.
So from the commission, upon our approval, it's going to the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission? They review it, and then they send it back to us, and then it's forwarded to town council for approval?
So you're going to, you're not going to approve it, you're going to approve the sending it to Critical Area Commission. Once you approve them, then it goes to town council. So you want to approve or authorize the planner to send the current draft to the Critical Area Commission?
And is that done simultaneous to, so it also goes to the town council, or no? We wait to the review from the Chesapeake Bay?
It's, it's better to get their review first, because if there are any major concerns they have, you all can address them before sending it to town council and back and, you know, if, if town council sends it to Critical Area and there's a big issue, then it's got to go back and forth with council. You guys are commenting on it. I think it's a little better to have them say, yeah, I don't see any major problems, this will probably be fine when it comes through. Or I do see this problem, and do you want to address it now?
So anything that the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission would find, it would come back to us, and then we would review it, revise as necessary.
Right.
And then it would be submitted to the town council for approval.
Right, which will make that final approval faster for them and more efficient.
So all we, tonight, after we approve it, we're, we're just approving it to go forward on to the Chesapeake Bay?
For comments.
For comments, correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So. Do we want to, is there any discussion that anyone would like to make on the final review of the document?
I, I have a question.
Okay.
On page 30, at the top of the page, D is highlighted yellow. Is that just an oversight, or is there a reason it's highlighted yellow?
Say that again. Nope, it must have skipped out.
Highlighted, and she was wondering if there's a reason for that.
Mine isn't, so I'm not sure.
Ours is.
It's on the printed version, I think.
Yeah. I'll double-check it, like that, when I send it to PDF, that it doesn't do that.
Page 30, page 30, the D is highlighted on the top of the page. I think that's the only highlight that I saw. He is special.
It's very special.
Never know, just got to verify. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's not, when I'm sending it to print now, it's not doing that, so I'm not sure why it did that.
It's only, it's not on the, the digital version, it's only on the hard copy. Oh, really? On page 30?
30.
That's highlighted. You're just, you're going to whine because you're a gun. It's yellow. You can't see that.
We now have diagnosed issue.
See that?
It's yellow.
There's another one on 35, one.
So I'm going to.
Number one is also, do you see number one down there?
On page 35?
Good catch.
But it's, my husband couldn't see that either.
Really? Guess we have to highlight in a different color.
So.
For the future.
So.
Did you get that?
I, I don't know if I, I sent it to y'all and then noticed it and changed it, or what happened, but the PDF print version I'm looking at right now has no highlights on it.
No, your version in the PDF doesn't have 30, page 30, the D highlighted, or page 35, the one highlighted?
Right, and I know that when I PDF'd it, I caught something and went back and made a change, so it's entirely plausible that, that was what I caught, and then somehow sent you the one with the highlights. It, it's just, I'm not seeing it now. When I throw it into PDF, there's no highlights.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Commissioner Hahn. Anything further?
Are we? How are we doing this? Are we just shouting things out? Are we going commissioner by?
But we can, we can start.
By page, or?
We can start with you, and we'll go around the whole one.
The whole document?
With you.
Yep. Okay. All right.
It was good to start with there.
On page two. Section E. As process. So I'm looking at E3. Actually, it ends up on page three. And I'm wondering why we chose the fifth business day. That seems very short. Is there a significance of? The fifth business day? I think Chris said it, they usually get back to you within like a week or two, so that's why I'm curious why, if they don't get back to us before the fifth business day, we would go ahead and approve it, something, or start something, or whatever.
This being in that, that front of the document, that was stuff you had already been through with Chris. So I do not know why this was chosen. I don't know if any of you.
Is it part of the zoning ordinance? Do they have that same timeline for documents?
No, they don't have any timeline. I went back and looked, and they don't prescribe a timeline. So I would think that five business days is very short, especially when some people like to submit things on Christmas, or, you know, all these other weird times.
So are you proposing something, Commissioner Blackwell?
I would suggest the 14th business day. Weeks. Or the 10th business day.
Right, the 10th business day would be two weeks.
Yeah. If anybody's interested in changing that to the 10th, I think that would.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Make a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to change the word "fifth" to "10th" on page three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Approved?
Page nine. Section C, which starts on page seven, but now I'm on page nine. Letter CE3. It says, "If the applicant cannot provide appropriate stormwater treatment and planting due to site constraints, then the applicant shall pay a fee to the town of Chesapeake Beach in lieu of performing on-site mitigation." And so this is conditional on the approving authority making findings. But then who finds that the applicant cannot make appropriate stormwater treatment and planting?
I think it's going to be the zoning administrator, or the approving authority, which.
Might be us.
Right, it could be you, it could be whoever's authorized to approve the specific type of application.
E directs us back to D, so I think we need another finding statement in three, like, and if the approving authority finds that the applicant cannot provide. Because otherwise, it's unclear who, otherwise, they can just do it.
Previously, it was, we had if the planning commission or its designee, and we struck that and put approving authority.
Where, that's what we had in your notes. I love your notes. So maybe we should put that. Can we make a motion to add that back in there?
This was, this, I'm quoting this from the July 26, 2023, and that's when we struck, well, that's when it's.
Did you read what we had decided on?
I, I don't have any notes. I just, it just states on E, if the planning commission or its designee, and that is highlighted yellow, and it's struck through, and it's replaced with approving authority in red.
Okay. And so it says that on number three. It says if the approving authority finds.
3E, if the, if the approving authority makes the findings set forth in section D above and authorizes an applicant to use the lot coverages set forth in that paragraph.
Right, so that's E. Now I'm going down to three, so E directs you back to D. So we would find all the things in D, just in order for them to do what's under E. But there's no situation where we find whether or not appropriate stormwater treatment and plantings can be done. Yeah. So what I would suggest is that we add a finding for the approving authority finds that statement.
E. So after plantings, could we, if the applicant cannot provide appropriate stormwater treatment and plantings to the approving autho, to the satisfaction of the approving authority due to site constraints? Is, is that something like that? Is that what you're looking at?
That's the idea. How I would word it, I would say, if the approving authority finds that, and then if the, that, cross out if, the applicant cannot provide.
Okay.
If that makes sense to everybody. So I would motion.
Go ahead.
Stand by.
Did you have a comment?
Vice Chair.
I, I just have a question. Okay, so are you also asking, what is appropriate? Are you asking how to verify what the appropriate stormwater treatment is? Which is my question. Who decides what appropriate is? Do we have to have guidelines on what appropriate stormwater treatment is? And do we have to identify what site constraints could be a deal breaker? So we've got several things going on in that paragraph that have, have always thrown me as well, but the, it's a confusing paragraph at best. It's very vague. And I think we need to tighten it up to make it a little clearer. We need to, I mean, your, your idea, then, Ms. Blackwelder, was to say the applicant cannot provide stormwater treatment as determined by the appropriate authorities? I mean, what, what is?
That's the idea, and I think that if we were in a situation, like Chris has described, the mitigation isn't going to work, whatever, then we could then, if we could have findings, we could then have the ability to, you know, seek an expert, seek some opinions, do some research, and have findings, to say, no, fees in lieu are not appropriate here, you can, you can do this. It, it just gives us the option to say.
Well, if you word it as you propose, if the approving authority determines the applicant cannot provide appropriate stormwater treatment and plantings due to site constraints, then the applicant, that still leaves it.
The applicant shall pay fee in lieu.
Right, but that still leaves it broad enough that the approving authority will determine it, but how it's determined, it, it leaves it open, but it just determines that it, it, it hasn't been, it isn't appropriate, so, but it, I think it should stay broad rather than specific, because we also, further down the line, we haven't determined what the fee in lieu, what we're going to do with that whole program.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it being not as broad as this, but as broad as I've suggested for now. Because I think that's the best we can get in one night at the moment.
I just want, I'm sorry, if I may bring back to what D, so this is referring to sub parcels that are under D. And what D is saying is that you can exceed the lot coverage limits if the parcel is legally non-conforming, which is, you know, more like a small or oddly shaped parcel. If lot coverage associated with new development activities is minimized. And for a bar parcel that's less than a half an acre, you can't exceed 500 square feet or 25%, whichever is greater. And then for one, it kind of gives you like the small sizes and, and the amount that can be put on it. So, you know, for one half acre or less parcel, it's 45, 4,445 square feet, whichever is greater. So it's basically very small parcels that are non-conforming. And that's why I think it's broad.
Does that only apply to half an acre? I see a lot of if half acre.
There are, you know, there's larger, this little, there's a chart here that goes up to an acre.
Isn't it a certain date by which then there are non-conforming lots, and that, that's some of the bigger parcels?
It's not just a date. It, it has to do with whether it's not conforming with the regulations of the.
No, I, I know that. I just know that we have some larger parcels that are non-conforming. Half of Bayview Hills, not half, but a big portion of Bayview Hills. I think there's some other larger tracks. I don't know if there's any in Richfield Station that are larger and non-conforming because of the date.
Yeah, it's just the, the smaller ones are what this is referring to, but that, but I just wanted to.
Smaller ones?
I wanted to bring it back to think about which parcels we're talking about, just to kind of help frame how, how you want to tighten that up, because it's not necessarily applying to everyone, if that makes sense.
I'm happy with the finding statement and leaving it broad.
I'm confused about the non-conforming. Where are we at non-conforming properties here? I don't, I don't, not, I'm missing that.
So you go up to D, so, yeah, you got to go to the previous page. We're talking about lot coverage in the LDA being limited to 15% of the lot or parcel.
Right.
Then you go down to D, lot coverage limits can be exceeded upon the finding by the planning commission or its designee. That it's, so it has to be a non-conforming lot to start with. It has, you have to have new development activities minimized on the lot. And then it has these rules related to acre parcels less, an acre or less.
That, that gives the specifics there of the non-conforming.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure that was in your framework while you're having the discussion, so.
So if we.
That makes a difference here.
Just give the caveat in 3E3 to add the approving authority. If the approving authority determines the applicant, and leave it at, that, that still keeps us in answer with the previous language?
Yes, I just wanted you to have the context of the previous language when you were discussing it.
I appreciate that.
So Commissioner Blackwelder, do you have a motion? Or is there any further discussion?
Do we, just questioning, do we really need to add that, since we have at the top E, where it already says if the approving authority makes the. Where it already says if the proving authority makes the findings forth?
So the for E, it's talking about a different finding. It's finding that it qualifies under A and B above. This would be a specific finding about mitigation, whether or not they can.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? Now, if you're looking at number three, can we also look at number one and number two, since we're on that same?
Oh, and just add it to all of them?
Well, I'm just wondering if we can't, because it has a general um concern, which is it seems vague. For example, on EI it says demonstrate that water quality impacts associated with runoff from the development activities that contributes, et cetera. Doesn't say how to demonstrate. Do we need to specify how to demonstrate? Do we need to be specific on that? Do we need to um on number two um pretty much, I guess, I just want to make sure that we are specific on some of these terms.
I think three is the finding for one and two, the way it's written.
Yeah, I don't believe that they should be more specific because then if they remain broad, then um we can determine i- if they should be are appropriate here. But I think if we're too, I think we should not get too specific because I I think there's so many infinitives that we would then have to add. Um, to my mind, one and two, um I agree with Commissioner Blackwalder, do not seem to speak about the specifics about the stormwater treatment and plantings. That seems very specific where the other two aren't aren't specific and are broad and don't um show a lack of compliance.
I think the way this is worded, yeah, like like Kathleen says, they have to do one and two, and then in three, we're finding whether they did one, two. All that. Do you see how I'm seeing that, Cindy?
Um, I see it, but I still don't see, I I could see a um I could see another issue like we had last night where everybody is confused and, you know, they're they're bringing up a tit for tat. You know, what does it mean to, what is what is the water quality that we're judging against? What is the um, you know, what are the mitigation factors we're judging against? And do we have to reference that at this section? Do we want to make sure that they've demonstrated according to these standards? Because to me, a developer can come in here and go, ah, but, you know, we did it and it looks like it's clean to me. And you could say, well, it's not clean according to that. Well, you didn't say it was according to that. So I just want to avoid confusion down the road when we're questioned.
So the the Critical Area Commission has like a whole Excel worksheet that large developers need to fill out to show that's they they have to have their previous, an engineer needs to fill it out. This is complicated formulas of what the previous stormwater is and what the resulting stormwater is. So.
But do we need to indicate that, that according to the Chesapeake Beach, Chesapeake Beach, uh, the Chesapeake Bay, blah, 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 you know, to uh Critical Area Commission, do we need to indicate that to make it?
I think because.
Or is it assumed?
Right, because, well, because all of this, all of whenever it's saying, you know, minimize through site design or or best management practices, it's kind of referring back to that. That's that's how it's implemented, that, you know, that you don't need to say it each time because it's coming back to this spreadsheet.
Okay, so essentially, when somebody comes into the Critical Area Ordinance, they're going to know to refer everything back to the Critical Area Commission, the state Critical Area Commission.
Now, well, right, so we implement some of those standards.
But in their application, they would know these specifics that are required.
If you are a large developer, yes. If you are yourself, right, then we have to help you. What you, if you're a one parcel, very small, nonconforming lot, we're not making you fill out that spreadsheet, right? There's a different calculation that's, you know, here's, if you're taking out this one tree, you're putting in these two trees and all of that.
So if if that's the case, if you're an individual and and having a small parcel of land, you would make the application. But you, as the town planner, would would explain this in more specifics, whereas a large developer would have to.
A large developer employs their, yes, they employ an engineer and they can fill out the the sheet.
Because it's it's a larger plot plat, so.
Right.
But for the smaller one, the individual, then most probably the town planner would navigate, help the individual navigate through that and explain what this was happening without being more specific.
Right. But Madam Chair, can I just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Quick question. Uh, we're talking about um what regulation we'd be following. Wouldn't C two, where it says land use activities within the LDA will be managed in accordance with the land use policies of COMAR twenty seven oh one oh two oh four? Wouldn't that be the regulation we reference?
Yes.
Oh, on C, LDA, on page seven?
Because before there was comments of, well, what will we know, what we use to reference for regulations? So we would go back to that one. Correct?
Yes, I'm just trying to, it's it's not technically under that. Except just provided in this. Yeah, so we're kind of specifically talking about lot coverage, right? And so, yes, it goes back to those regulations. But we're giving some exceptions to lot coverage. And a lot of that has to do with these very small nonconforming lots and trying to be reasonable and not considered taking.
I'm sorry, um, Vice Chair. Yes, thank you. The reason why I'm going over this is because when I talked to the Critical Critical Area Area Commission just the other day, I was talking to Ms. Espinoza the other day. Um, did you talk to her by any chance? No. Who did you talk to? Esposito, I'm sorry. Did you talk, who did you talk to at the Critical Area Commission?
I talked to Jennifer and I'm trying to remember the woman's name I talked to a while.
Because the, when I talked to her the other day, um she led me to believe that these ordinances were yes, we can take them off the model if we so choose, which most towns in Maryland, as I've been reading, have been doing exactly that, word for word. But she said that what she was hoping, what they were all hoping, now she's been there for ten years, but what they were hoping is that this planning commissioner, whoever, would take this and actually create it and design it specifically to our town and change it however we want to within, you know, a basic wide guideline, but so if if we wanted to go ahead and change up how we wanted to demonstrate that water quality impacts blah, 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 we could actually change it how we wanted to to create different ways to demonstrate water quality. So I'm just saying I can't, I don't think you can assume um that everything is going to go back to Critical Area when indeed maybe some towns have actually made it more specific to their own town and have had ways to um deal with how to specify what the criteria is for people to mitigate and to demonstrate their stormwater management, et cetera. I just want to make sure that it is, after seeing what we're doing with the Board of Appeals, I just want to make sure that we're very clear and we're not vague in this document because half of the town is critical area. So I just want to make sure that we're not going to get this stuff coming back, developers saying, or whoever, you know, oh, but, you know, we, you know, we never, you were never told us, really. It wasn't specifically said in the document.
Right, so I I had a similar conversation, but the this this was handed, right? This was done, you guys worked on this with your planning and zoning administrator. Um, and so it was very close to ready. And so it is, you know, up to the board. Uh, I know they're waiting for something. It it's the board's decision here, but we we, this has had a lot of work and a lot of time and a lot of town funding invested in it. And I think that to kind of go back and start over again is complicated, right? Uh, that's, but I am staff, so you all, you know, that that's what it sounds like. That's the path of of correcting or changing all that.
Hi, May, Madam Chair.
And Brown.
Um, just to comment on my learned colleague's comment here. Um, last March, when we started this effort and we were given the twenty eighteen model um for this, I communicated with uh the regulations and mapping coordinator at the Critical Area Commission and I asked her two questions. What's the current model version, which she gave me is twenty twenty two, and then we changed and started working on twenty two. But I said, could you also give me an example of a community, specifically Calvert County or Anarundel County, that has adopted this model for their community? Uh, her reply was that model ordinances are meant as guidance documents. Models are not meant to be adopted. Um, and she could not cite, she she went on to say, Calvert County and Anarundel County are are working on their mo- their uh regulations. So I spent part of today looking around on Calvert County and uh Anarundel County. I could find no place where they have a single document like this. What I did find is the way we had did it previously, we had two sections of our code, one on growth allocation and and one other, which is what we are canceling with this document, section seventeen and eighteen. Um. And and the other jurisdictions seem to me to be taking this and applying it to their specific uh situation. This model is for all of Maryland, all jurisdictions. And so not everything in the model, and I know we've cut it back considerably, but not everything in the model applies to us. So for example, on page seven, where we say, uh, in addition, IDA shall be located in an area of at least twenty adjacent acres unless it is the entirety of the upland area of the town of Chesapeake Beach, or is it is consistent with part seven. And seven is a uh growth allocation. I'm, I don't understand. I don't understand what that sentence means. What is the upland area of Chesapeake Beach, for example? Um, then uh, on page thirteen, uh, C, uh, subparagraph C, it says the hundred foot buffer that is associated with a non-titled wetland of special state concern, which shall be so designated and included in the list, but the draft is note below it says, no such wetland exists in Chesapeake Beach. So why do we have that paragraph there? Why, why are we just adopting verbatim this for a general uh document? Uh, I won't bore you, well, maybe for a second. But uh, my other concern, which was, uh, I went through and made a list of all the references to uh COMAR that are in the current document. Um, forty five, made a list. I was going to make copies, but you don't care. Um, and and on that list, uh, one section is section uh uh, in section fifteen agriculture. It's about farm fertilizers and the use thereof and certifying someone to uh make sure that they're licensed to apply them. I don't think we have any farms in Chesapeake Beach. So I'm not sure why we would have that section. And then the other, another section um is these regulations describe the department certification li- oh, that's section fifteen is agriculture. These regulations describe the department certification and licensing program for individuals or businesses that prepare and offset farm nutrient management plans. Um. We do have a section about oysters in the, in this draft, but we don't have a section about public beaches, which seems to me a little more appropriate to Critical Area. And public beaches is covered in COMAR section twenty six point oh eight point oh nine. So I I just find, I I I struggled all day with this, trying to figure out why I should support it. Um, and I'm I'm coming up short on why we need this a broad, generic document that my learned colleague over here will uh suggest later that we spend government resources to uh come up with a training program for the community. And that that's kind of what got me started. Why do we, we're having, having a, you've got two ways of solving something like that. You either come up with a training program, you have to train people up so they understand it, or you make it simpler. Make it more direct.
Yeah.
And I choose the second
Yeah.
method. And I mean, we've all learned a lot. I have certainly learned a lot about Critical Area and Critical Area regulations in this process. And as I look at the map, I think, as you just said, uh, the IDA is almost all of our, it is all of our, I think, RV one and RV two areas. Um, and it, why didn't, why don't we approach zoning from the point of view of Critical Area? Why don't we start with that and then, rather than doing it backwards, now we're going back and re applying another layer of map over the existing layer of zoning maps and districts. It just, it's very confusing to me. And and it seems to me that simplicity is uh would be called.
Good night.
That's my comment.
One thing, I still think we have to go back to what Lori said and like to make our way through, because otherwise I feel like we're jumping all around and I'm having a whole hard time holding what pieces we're supposed to be like thinking about. But the other thing that seems really important to me is that what we're looking at at the Board of Appeals is that one of the biggest reasons we're getting like our hands slapped is how long this stuff is taking and how like how we're not passing this and getting this to happen in the timeline. So how do we go back and do that in a way that gets this moving the way that we need to, so that we don't suffer consequences from that?
Um, thank you. Um, Sarah, do have a comment, I mean, on Commissioner Brown's thought about that this is just a, it's a guide, it's not really, it's supposed to be customized to the jurisdiction and the location and that we are using this as as basically taking the whole thing and just adopting it for for the Critical Area in Chesapeake Beach when that's not necessarily its intention.
Yeah, so I think that your planner and you all have spent much time working through this and trying to make it work for Chesapeake Beach. I think I am a new planner coming in. Um, I know that looking at the zoning ordinance and some other stuff is important to you. Um, and I think that trying to get, because right now, some of the rules in this are, I think, what you all would like, which is a little more strict than what you have right now. So partly to stay on deadlines and and to help, you know, you all there, I think it makes sense to pass. partly to stay on deadlines and, and to help, you know, you all there, I think it makes sense to pass this to make sure that, that as, there's a lot of zoning or permits coming in. And I know that these are more, more restrictive and that's what you want, and I'm approving things with the current ordinance, right? So if we go back and take another six months to create a more simplified ordinance, we are going through with, with what's there now. Um, I think that because you've done the work and because your planners did the work, it makes sense to move forward with this. When I spoke with the Critical Area Commission, what they said to me is, if you want to make amendments, if you want to make changes, you are allowed to do that at any point, right? So move this forward, make sure you get where you want to go. And then I think there are some things we need to come back and look at. I've wanted to kind of have a conversation with you about some changes that I think can make things easier for residents and easier for review. Anyway, and that, that ties directly into what both commissioners are saying about this ordinance, I think.
Well, I, I think in lieu of what you have just said, I, I think it's true. I mean, as Commissioner Brown said, you know, March of twenty twenty-three, it is now November of twenty twenty-three, and you know, the, the horror when I just heard before, we had the designee that Commissioner Hahn brought up, and now we're like, should we go back to that? We, we, we absolutely have to move forward, because it, it's kind of like taking your car in for an expense, an inspection. They're always gonna find something. And I think that we, sooner or later, we have to just accept this and modify it later. And I, I understand that there's, you know, perhaps some of us are a bit shell shocked from the Board of Appeals, but it's true. We have to, you know, we, we cannot perseverate. We have to, you know, we make the decisions the best with the information we have, the best we have at this time, and then go forward. But I, I think we have to make progress.
I'll make my motion. Um, I'll make a motion on page nine. Um, section E E three. Include the words if the approving authority finds that, and to strike the word if. The rest of the bullet will read as stated.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. I, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. So on E, it says, "If the approving authority makes the findings set forth," you want to then on E, include some of those same words again on E, I mean, on
E three.
I'm sorry. So you want to take those words and bring them back down to the approving authority did not provide appropriate, is that what you want to just continue, just? Sorry, say that again?
I just want to say, if the approving authority finds that the applicant cannot, um, then they can do the free fee in lieu, not, as it states, the applicant shall pay the fee in lieu, and maybe they say they can't. There's no opportunity for findings that they actually can't. But your concern has been that when people can mitigate, they do.
And they should.
Um, so that's, that's what my motion addresses.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? So we vote? All in favor of? All in, all in favor?
Say aye.
All opposed? The motion's passed?
Madam Chair, can I ask the administrator one question?
Absolutely.
Why isn't there no part nine?
Part nine is actually part of your existing zoning ordinance. That's actually, some of these pieces are pulled from your existing zoning ordinance and they needed changes, but part nine didn't need any changes.
So why don't we number it sequentially, so we have part eight, nine, ten, or whatever?
Okay.
Yes. But you, yes, Commissioner Blackwall, you, you can continue, but I, I wish the commissioners would bear in mind what we've discussed about, um, I think, um, the town planner has in the, the most kindest way, diplomatic, has said, um, you, you people need to move along. So having said that, um, continue.
Okay, so on page ten, it's just a grammar thing on number ten, make a motion for it. Um, says the applicant shall obtain a permit, shall be obtained.
Number ten? The applicant shall obtain a permit, shall, oh, it's a, it's a typo, right?
Yeah.
That's redundant, it's repeated. The applicant shall obtain a permit, shall obtain, shall be obtained. So the applicant shall obtain a permit from the town, and the second shall be obtained, should be struck. You see that, town planner?
Number sixteen, on page sixteen, I'm sorry. Saying that it's saying that in the buffer, the installation or cultivation of new lawn or turf in the buffer is prohibited. And I just wrote a question, would that affect Kellam's Field in any way?
We're under de-mitigation for impacts to the buffer?
Yeah. And if it's a, maybe just don't need a long explanation about it, I just thought that was weird.
The um, are you, I mean, that's, I guess that's, the question is lawn or turf, new turf being permitted?
Prohibited. It says it's prohibited.
It's prohibited, right?
Right. I mean, we want turf on Kellam's Field, it's a football field.
Right. Um.
Should we strike that?
It's up to you.
I mean, is there a reason to have it that I, 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 is, will, will it cause problems for Kellam's Field? If so, then yes, I would move to strike that.
Mm-hmm. Let me make sure we're development activities.
Lori, where are you again?
I'm on page sixteen. And it's under section D, mitigation for impacts of the buffer, and that's item six.
Okay, thank you.
Says, "The installation or cultivation of new lawn or turf in the buffer is prohibited." And
I know it's trying to minimize uh, chemical, that's what it's trying, it's trying to minimize, like homeowner chemical applications.
Like, um, artificial?
Right, well, also like when you are caring for your lawn or installing new lawn, you, as a homeowner, put down chemicals and you don't, because you're a homeowner, always necessarily follow the proper
A roundup?
Right, and so then you have more chemical loading. So I think that's
I feel like we probably should get rid of that one. Especially because we do have a ton of Kellam's Field. I mean, people have yards. The reality of
Rachel, you say?
I Oh geez. I mean, maybe that kind of thing would come in on, on Cindy's education program whenever that gets made, but I would not want something in this regulation to make somebody say, oh, you can't keep up Kellam's Field. That just makes no sense to me. They're all nothing. And I don't know.
I think the fundamental question is why?
It does say new, yeah.
Why does that make sense? And I, I, I don't know why it would make sense.
Yeah. And that's an existing?
Yeah. I think we can say that we're not gonna put new turf down there.
What if they want to build a park in the middle of the town?
Can we just add some exception, you know, add a term, a phrase that might say? Because I think, you know, Sarah's right, we do not want to encourage homeowners along the coast to start planting grasses and then have to maintain and add certain elements to the, to the soil that we don't want. So I think maybe you want to add a sentence in there that might say uh, yes, I should have covered it, but it does say, as, you know, Rachel said, new lawn or turf, and I don't see us we, unless you're saying a park, unless you're saying a park, even
Prohibited is a very strong word. How about discouraged?
Can I make a suggestion?
Please.
Can we say, "The installation or cultivation of new lawn or turf in the buffer is prohibited unless for a public purpose authorized by the approving authority?"
Yeah, something, that's what we have to say, something like that. Exactly right. That's very good.
Very good.
Yeah, that was very good. So.
Do you want me to say it again?
Somebody else make it.
Unless unless for a public purpose authorized by the approving authority.
Purpose.
The approving authority?
So, Vice Chair, are you making that motion?
I would move, unless, uh, you would like
Write it down.
Okay. Okay, so I would like to um, make a motion on D. Part three, I guess you're gonna have to do part three. Letter D. Uh, number six. Add unless for public purpose authorized by approving authority. By the approving authority.
All in, do I have a second? All, any more discussion?
I still don't understand why we don't want grass growing to keep erosion from happening on the waterfront.
Because, because the mid, if you look at um, what the state has designated as grasses that have deeper roots, gra- a normal turf doesn't have very deep roots, better than nothing, but they want you to
Is this coming from our grass actually?
I'm just
You know, I, I, I think we're making this up as we go along.
It's, it's not making I'm reading what it says right here, and there's a reason why they don't want turf, because
New lawn.
They don't want to
That means somebody can't fill all their grass and put new seed out and uh, get a new lawn.
Yeah, or somebody that we know.
What if we change prohibited?
Which I just don't understand why, why that is a, is a useful approach.
Because a lot of people, as Sarah said, a lot of people will put amendments into those grasses and they go out and, or send out into the water, and that's our problem. Most people don't get green grass unless they
Example of one person that has done that?
New people to the, I mean, we put in stuff that we probably shouldn't be putting into our, our, our grass in order to make it green. I mean, a lot of people, they have these companies that come around and, and spray all kinds of, you know, pollutants onto their, under their soil that typically shouldn't be, that is probably
Whole section of Comar on fertilizers and what is authorized and what isn't. You can buy Roundup and ACE, but you can buy a version that has been approved by the state of Maryland. Not the one that you hear of all those, all the hype about. So it doesn't, no, I've, I've attended a, a lecture by a man who represented himself as the Maryland State Grass Guy. Okay, this is four or five years ago, so I don't know if I'll get it all correct. But uh, we asked him about Roundup specifically, and he said, "Don't worry about it. The stuff, what's, what's out there now degrades within a, a week or so into a harmless chemical, and it doesn't matter if you spray it right along the waterfront or back in the interim."
I wasn't referring to Roundup.
That was one of the questions we asked.
A Roundup is not a problem.
But, I mean, you, I understand there are people that want to have natural waterfronts like we have at the end of North Beach. That's on public land that North Beach owns, and they can do whatever they want. But to mandate it, to say it is prohibited for a private residence like some of us who own I don't, I would like to understand what the threat is to the before I could support any
One, you're saying that you I feel like that it all is grass already. There isn't natural wetlands that anybody's going to be turning into grass along the waterfront in Chesapeake Beach. Like, you know what I mean? That you seem to be arguing for something that doesn't really exist either way, does it?
Asking me? I'm saying, I don't understand what the, why something is prohibited. There's usually some danger, some hazard, some issue, some po- problem. I don't know what the problem is to say you can't put a lawn or grass in, suggests to me that you have to leave it without a lawn or a grass, which subject to erosion, which seems like a bad idea to me. I, I, I don't understand the reason for doing that.
Because I do think that natural, natural shrubs, trees, those, all of those things have much stronger root systems that help prevent erosion that grass doesn't have. So if we're taking down those things to put in grass, then somebody should be regulating that.
Make this up? I, I don't know that
I mean, that's not a made up thing. That's like an environmental science background. Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say
Hey, you did.
I was just gonna say kind of to, what Commissioner Weaver said about Kellam's Field is, existing is not new, right? So if you already have a lawn and you want to change your grass, it's not prohibited, because it's already, you're just saying, I want a Zoya grass instead of what I have. Right, so I just wanted to make sure that was understood in the context of the conversation.
So is there any place along the waterfront in Chesapeake Beach that would be new?
I, I don't have an answer to that question.
I don't think there is. I mean, it's all existing, it's all there, so unless it's a new If this doesn't apply to Chesapeake Beach, why don't we eliminate it?
There could be a new residence in Chesapeake Beach.
But if it's already got a lawn, has suggested here. I, I mean, everybody's heard the arguments, I think. I'm ready to vote.
Are we ready? Any more discussion?
So while we were all talking
So while we were all talking, I used Google. And I asked it about using chemicals in the critical area, and it comes up EPA. And it talks about the facts about lawn chemicals and how it, the fertilizer herbicides and pesticides used in lawns and garden care. If they're applied improperly, they can run off into streams harming fish and other animals. So it goes on its three-page document, but it basically says that the improper use of it promotes excess weed in lakes and ponds and causes groundwater contamination. So that's the EPA talking.
So are you suggesting that we change it to the improper use of pesticides or herbicides along the waterfront is prohibited? I'll buy that. But what does that have to do with the lawn?
Because you're using lawn fertilizers and chemicals on it.
Yes, okay, but that's not what this says. It doesn't say that you, the people, it doesn't say anything about the improper use of herbicides or fertilizers or pesticides. This is just about putting seeds on the ground to grow or turf.
Turf sod.
I don't mean to complicate this issue any further, but.
And then you have your true green people come through and, because you know, sod's pretty expensive, and then they lay chemicals on it so that it doesn't weed and everything else.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, yeah?
Yes, I have.
I think, I think sadly, what Commissioner Brown just brought up is an important thing that we did not include in here. And this is why when I brought up, and I've talked to the Critical Area Commission staff, and they said, you know, what is sad about the state of Maryland is that nobody takes the time, because we're all volunteers and who has time to do all that? They don't take this and appropriately, you know, go over it as far as individual towns and how it meets their needs. And this is a good example of it exactly, because we do have a lot of turf in our critical areas. So what do we do with it now? But I think the way we can deal with it is by adding what Commissioner Brown said was, and I don't remember seeing it anywhere in here, and that is about chemicals, and we should ban any inappropriate chemicals. I don't even know how to word that, but that is something that I don't remember seeing in here anywhere. So maybe you'd like to make a motion like that?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we not vote on my motion yet?
No, we have not voted on the installation or cultivation of new lawn or turf in the buffer.
But your question is, do we want to add to that motion chemicals? Do we want to add to that in that particular motion? Is that what you're asking me?
I don't know if that's the right.
He's less is more.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I don't think that's the right place to put it, if you want to put it. So I think you should finish this.
If there's no further discuss, is there any further discussion? Seeing none. We have the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Let the record reflect the voting. Commissioner Blackwelder? I hope you're jumping to page thirty-five.
Thirty-five? Why don't you make it forty?
Page eighteen?
We're jumping to page eighteen. Turn the page kindly.
This is from our old code, and I've had it highlighted for years. It says.
Where are you?
Okay, so I'm on page eighteen, letter G, but it starts, I'm going to orient you, on page seventeen. And the end of the sentence says permitted uses shall also be subject to the following. Okay. I'll orient you. Page seventeen, section, part four, section B. Go down to one, and then now go to C two. And it says, cutting or clearing of trees or removal of vegetation is allowed in the modified buffer area for the following purposes only. And it gives a list, but at the very bottom of the list is G. And it says, to permit the development allowed above to be constructed. So that just basically says it's always allowed. That's my problem.
But doesn't G say, when I read that, I think that G refers to if you follow A, B, C, D, E, F, then you can permit the development allowed if you've met the above.
It doesn't say that, though. It says, all uses shall be subject to provisions established in other sections of this chapter. Development or redevelopment in a modified buffer areas shall be subject to all of the criteria applicable to underlying zoning districts and shall be further subject to all of the criteria applicable to the governing land use classification. Permitted uses shall also be subject to the following. Thor erosion protection measures shall be provided in accordance with the Critical Area Program. But then it just says this, cutting or clearing of trees or removal of vegetation is allowed in the modified buffer area for the following purposes only. And only includes everything because of letter G.
What does, what does the allowed above refer to?
I think it refers to the letters above.
Yeah, it, so it refers back to, it refers to two, which is cutting or clearing, but then that does. It could, it could be seen to refer back up to C. That all uses shall be subject to the provisions established in other, so development and redevelopment. So I don't think it's allowing all uses to do it. It's just saying if the, if the use is allowed under the zoning and by not allowing the removal of trees, you would essentially create a taking because there's no ability to develop, then you have to allow.
Is there some kind of, but they do allow removal according to the provisions of the chapter. So there's critical area provisions that guide the tree and the lot coverage and all this stuff.
Right, but G only can be applied to the section it's under. It can't be applied outside of that section.
You don't have a problem with it. It's not. Me, that seems like getting, like, for instance, say we were on Randall Cliffs, which is protected, but say somebody removed the protections on Randall Cliff.
Okay.
And somebody wanted to put something up. And now it's going to say, cutting and clearing of trees, now, now we can just clear it.
So actually, I'm, I'm, I'm re, I want to go back to my answer. It actually, the trees can only be removed if, so, okay, so if you need to prevent trees from falling or blocking streams and cause damage to other structures, but there's another tree and you can't get the tree, it's a problem, you can remove that other tree to get to that tree. If you are going to provide access to private piers and there's a tree in the way of the construction of the private pier, then you can remove that tree. It's about, it actually says allowed above to be constructed or installed. So it's specifically related to the construction of each of the previous items. So I apologize for not reading it first correctly the first time.
Oh, it's to facilitate the construction, not the site plan?
Right, if you have to move it to get your truck in to do whatever needs to be done, and it's allowed in A through F, then.
I think the word permit confuses us. It sounds like you're giving a permit. But to allow, you should say to allow the development, to, to.
Facilitate?
Facilitate the development, I think is what, yeah, because I think the word permit is what confuses.
Yeah, I don't know. That's, that's something to me.
Have we ever defined tree?
In the critical area ordinance, all references to trees have a caliber, so we don't need to do it in the critical area ordinance.
Haven't we been through this document in its entirety once?
We skipped over a lot, I think.
So just for reference, this area was added, and it comes out of section two ninety dash seventeen G one. We didn't discuss this at all. It was just a yellowed out area, and Chris added it.
Yeah, it's our old code. He took it straight from our old code. If, yeah.
We didn't really go over.
So that's just maybe something to note for later. But if, if, well, I mean, this is going to the Critical Area Commission and coming back. But that G still gives me heartburn, but I don't have a good suggestion for editing it. consideration of what Sarah said.
We'll just change the word permit, because you're thinking of giving a permit, but it's being to permit.
No, I don't, I don't think Commissioner Blackwelder is thinking of an actual permit. I think it's allowance.
Right, I'm just saying, why have anything else?
He thought it wasn't referring to the above other letters, which Sarah is saying that it, it, C, it's under C, and those, all those other A through F have to take place first, otherwise than G. And as I understand that, what Sarah said is that the development is allowed in order to, if there is going to be the removal of a tree and there's another tree blocking, you can remove the blocking, the obstacle to get to the tree. So.
Maybe we should add in the words to permit development, and then add in allowed in letters A through F above. Is that what you meant, Sarah?
That is what.
That is how you would interpret this, or you implementing it.
Well, I can make that motion.
What's the word above that bothers you?
Well, I just thought it meant all development, so that just, you know. But if it's only A through F above, I would motion to say in part four, section B, one, B, G, add the wording after the word allowed described in letters A through F. Rest of the sentence would read.
I think the reference to, to permit the development allowed above refers back to those preceding letters myself.
I was confused. I'm just trying to make it more clear. I'm fine if nobody agrees with me, and we just interpret it that way, too. That's, that's also fine with me.
Anybody have a?
I'll second, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Then let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Who opposed? Yes. Blackwelder?
On page nineteen. On page twenty-four, we still have the fees and lose written out in our code. I know we can't discuss that right now, but that is a problem that they are fifteen years old. We discussed that previously. I would. I don't know, Sarah, if you have the ability to research a more current figure before we, like, if I were to make a motion to pass.
Can you tell me which section you're in?
I'm sorry. I'm on page twenty-four. And.
X, number ten, X.
Yes.
Under, after it's notes, then it's nine, which is IX, and then there's the X, fees and lieu of planting. A, B.
Yes, because I'm making the change, I'm here, I'm there now. I'm making the changes in the document, so it's throwing my numbering off.
So in the review by the Chesapeake Beach, Chesapeake Bay, um, critical area, would they look at, for example, this section right here, subsection one and two, and would they say, oh, this is fifteen years old, the fee is now XYZ, and change that? Or no? I mean, well, I guess what I'm asking is, in your experience and knowledge, has this fee been changed in later versions?
You can change the fee, yes, but what we can do is provide a memo over to Critical Area Commission saying, we would like to increase our fees and lose. Can you provide us with a recommendation? Because we're at this point and we don't want to.
Please, I've lived for it. So there, the amount that they come up with is a dollar fifty, and in fact, that's what our town, I think, charges currently is a dollar fifty per square foot.
Not the dollar twenty-five?
Uh, not the dollar twenty-five, but when I went back and figured out what it really costs to landscape something for a square foot, because I've been doing a lot of planning lately, you can't plant anything for a buck fifty a square foot. Even if you had a cutting, you can't do it, not when you put mulch and everything else you need to put in there. It is three times or four times, maybe five times that price because of inflation. But my concern is, is that the town is incurring a lot of costs trying to make up the difference between what the reality of the costs are and what we're charging the fee and lieu program. So my concern is, even though I know that Critical Area Commission is now saying dollar fifty, and they're, it, it's, there is no way, and I don't think anybody in there is really going through and figuring out the costs, because it's really just not something they do. It's, it's really something, we would have to go out and say, okay, how much would these five-gallon plants be? And all the cost that it goes in, but if you look at what a five-gallon plant costs today, and how much that costs to put into the ground with all of the, it's nowhere, it's way beyond three or four dollars a square foot. So I think if we were going to do the town justice and actually get the amount of money that, you know, is accurate for how much it would cost, we really need to go out and do some research ourselves, not ask Critical Area Commission. It really has to be pertaining to our town and how much our costs would be here. Why, you know, Critical Area, I mean, who knows what they're, you know, putting in there, but we have to make sure our town is not losing money on this fee and lieu program.
What if I, oh, sorry, I was going to say, what if I asked them to give us a, give us a limit? Like, give us some advice as to if we use this. Like, give us some advice as to if we use this number, will you come back and say it's way too high?
What's the, well, where did you find?
I'm just trying to figure out how to get it to them and.
It's, you know, uh, Wall just sent us a memo on that, I think at the last meeting. Did you see that memo, Sarah, where she sent us a little memo about what the, the town has? I think it's a dollar fifty.
The fee and loo, I wrote, I wrote the fee and loo memo.
Was that you that wrote it?
I have it up here and it's, it's on your agenda.
It was a doll, wasn't it a dollar fifty, Sarah, or something?
I, unless she sent a different memo, it's, our current rates are one twenty-five and two fifty.
Well, I see that here, but I'm just saying she wrote us a memo. Did you bring it?
Is it if?
I don't know. Okay, well, anyway.
She sent a separate memo.
All right, it doesn't matter. The point is, is that even at a dollar, even at two fifty a square foot for the public sector, we're still, in my opinion, way too low as far as obtaining the fees that we need to even just pay costs.
It's a lot less than SOD.
If you wanted to direct me to research it while also directing me to get some advice from Critical Area Commission on what would be too high, that would allow both processes to move forward at the same time.
And also, I mean, I think, I mean, maybe it's more expensive on a coastal area than a non-coastal area. But, um, I mean, if you found a dollar fifty, obviously, I mean, my understanding is we're not even doing fee and loo.
Yeah, we've never done.
So, well, I mean, we, wait a minute.
We should expand. It's a ten or twenty pager.
So if we're going to have a fee and loo program and we have to make it so that we're not losing money on some developer coming in and saying, I'm going to clear all these forests. Give me a fee and loo, I'm going to pay the money. They're laughing all the way to the bank. We're losing money as a town. I don't see where that makes any sense. So.
Do you not like her suggestion?
No, because I mean, Critical, Critical Area is not going to give us the right amount of, they're not going to, they're not going to be able to sit down and actually price out everything.
No, what she suggested after that, she said, ask them for a suggestion on what would be the high limit.
But.
While I also research.
While she does her.
Okay, because, I mean, all right.
Find the price, Sarah, that the town will not lose a nickel and we will be in the, in the black by this fee and loo program.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to get it to Critical Area and not create a, a trigger back while also being able to do more research. That's what I'm trying to find for you right now.
Other jurisdictions actually are implementing fees and loo. And, I mean, you know, it would seem bizarre to me that all of a sudden we're going to say ten dollars per square foot where no other jurisdiction in, in Maryland has a fee like that. I mean, I, I would think it's good to know what the range is because obviously this seems very, very inexpensive to all of us, but I don't know what this, the, why they came up with, how they came up with these.
I think the county is also a dollar fifty, if I'm not mistaken. I just talked to Ron Marnie about that. I think he also said. But anyway, the point is, um, even at a dollar fifty, I think it's way low. And I just want to make sure that we are as close to where, I mean, I don't, I do not want to spend, I do not want, I mean, that, that would be a laughing stock. The developer says, well, it's much cheaper to have you go in and mitigate than to have me do it. And that's what it was, it's looking like is happening here. Is if that happens.
That's not, that's not what's actually happening. But again, we can, we can do this kind of two-tiered process where we just make sure there's not a red flag number with Critical Area and I get you guys a memo with other jurisdictions and actual costs estimates. Maybe not actual, but, you know, in talking to, yeah, ballpark estimates. And, and then you guys can discuss the number you want to fall on while Critical Area Commission is also reviewing this document.
You mean that we have sent it along? All right.
So that we have, we, we can do both things at the same time.
Because you're also saying the fee and loo program, did I hear you say that that has not been used before?
No, the, the town doesn't really let people use fee and loo.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they just have not hit a situation where they can't say, no, you can actually do better. So.
Okay.
We're having a discussion. About a theory.
Think, think about what it takes to set up a program like that. You've got to have a bank account. You've got to have accountants. You've got to have a person to manage it. And then how do you spend it? How does it get back in? I mean, it takes, takes management effort. And I think, I'm guessing the town has said, it's not worth the effort.
Can't we just say we follow the Maryland State Code of Regulations in reference to, in fee and loo?
It's a, it's a loser bet, though. Because they have not checked these pri, they do not know how much money goes into this. As, as Commissioner Brown was just saying, there's so much money and time and effort that goes into a fee and loo program. And if we're not using it, do we even want to have that program in the document if we can't create it so that it's accurate and, and it works for all of us? I'm not sure where, if, if we just go and ascertain what all these other towns, these other towns are using this exact same document. I've checked a lot of towns. They're all using the same silly numbers. They haven't been reviewing what they're, they're using on, if they're even using fees and loo. But they're all just, you know, blank checking this and it's ridiculous. We shouldn't be blank checking anything. We should be doing this according to what our town needs are and what we're spending. Anyway, yeah, there you go. Let's.
So right now we have the option to keep the even lower fees. Let's just leave it. The whole section and who knows what that leaves or to go with Sarah's suggestion.
Yeah. So there's no motion, is that correct? We are?
I can make the motion or somebody can make the motion.
Do what?
Direct the planner to research fees and loo independently and with the Critical Area Commission to provide recommendations for item ten. The, on page twenty-four. At work.
We have seconds to that motion? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
No.
I already have a memo from the
Commissioner Blackwelder? For John.
I'm on page twenty-six.
We, we really need, I, I just want to say that I, um, I've heard the town planners' instructions and we, we should present, continue on this so we can approve this and get this to the Chesapeake Bay Commission at the end of tonight's meeting. So if we have to stay here until it's done, I think it's good. Oh, no. I mean, we're behind.
Oh, yes. Too many papers. Okay, now I'm on page twenty-six. Part Five, Other Habitat Protection Areas.
Uh huh.
I'm under section A two. A two, it's maps identifying these specific, it says maps identifying these specific habitat protection areas are maintained by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, Maryland DNR Wildlife and Heritage Division. And these areas include but are not limited to. This section does not contain the reference to the FIDS covenant parcel. And so my motion would be, and I understand, I see that there's the Richfield Station here, but in our comprehensive plan, it's separated out. So in our comprehensive plan, it says forest conservation areas. And then there's a separate color for a forest interior bird dwelling habitat protection easement area. And then there's open space. So it's separated in three ways and I just, I know why it's not here, but that's not this commission's collective recommendation and.
It's just because it's not on the map. It, I, I was looking at the map.
Oh, okay.
That we're, I was sent to reference the map and identify the things that are shown on the Maryland DNR Wildlife and Heritage Area Division map. So that's why it's laid out the way it is.
Okay, so why isn't the covenant and the protection area of the FIDS shown on that map?
It's included in that Richfield Station one, but we, we can absolutely do it. I'm just saying, there's, no one asked me to, this is just, I looked at the map and copied what was on the map.
No, I'm not, I'm not blaming you. I, I know exactly why. This is, we've gone round and round about the FIDS for years now. And it's very hard to get that property protected and.
So Commissioner Blackwelder, do you have a motion?
I do.
Okay, please present it.
Um, and my motion also includes, um, the forest conservation areas in Chesapeake Village. So what my motion says, and I can provide it to you, Sharon, because I did write this one out. In Part Five, Other Protection Areas, Section A two, insert the two hundred and two point seven acre, seven, eight acre forest interior bird dwelling habitat as item A two A and include all other protection areas listed in order below. Also add Chesapeake Village subdivision under Forest Conservation Act easement areas so that the section reads. Two, maps identifying these specific habitat protection areas are maintained by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, Maryland DNR Wildlife and Heritage Division. These areas include but are not limited to A, two hundred and two acre forest interior bird dwelling habitat adjacent to Fishing Creek and Richfield Station subdivision. B, Randall Cliff Natural Heritage Area. C, Forest Conservation Act easement areas. I, Richfield Station subdivision. II, Thomas Perrin Jr. property. IIII, Chesapeake Village subdivision. C, Linwood T. Callum Memorial Park. And D, any other area meeting the qualifications of A one above found on the most recent map being provided by Maryland DNR Wildlife and Heritage Division.
Do I have a second on the motion? Discussion? Just one point of clarification for me. The FIDS thought that is a, I, what is it? The specific acronym for that is Forest Interior Dwelling Species. So we should, that's the correct, or the correct title for that. So we should make sure that we include that in, in that, in your motion.
Forest Interior Bird Dwelling Habitat.
Well, that's not what FIDS.
Right, okay, you want.
It should be FIDS. Which is, I think, Forest Interior Dwelling Species.
You have that in front of you. I don't have it in front of me.
Last, it was in last month's minutes because I.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
So could you make that amendment since you have it, like amendment to my amendment or whatever? amend my motion.
Do, did you? Okay.
Okay, okay.
So, um, is there any further discussion?
I have one question. We're saying that the Maryland Department of Natural Resources maintains the FIDS map. Do we know that for a fact?
It's not on that map, but that's an online map. So I, this, this section is identifying, based on Commissioner Blackwelder's request, the specific areas in Chesapeake Beach that would be on this map or that should be protected. So I don't think it's wrong to add it here. It's just.
My question is, I mean, the sentence says maps identifying these habitat areas are maintained by the Maryland Natural Resources Wildlife and Heritage Division. I'm just asking, do they maintain that FIDS map? Because that's, we're adding it under there as if they do.
Well, does maintain mean warehouse?
I mean, if they do, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're, we're task, tasking Maryland with maintaining a map. I don't know that we have that authority.
It's, I mean, it's recorded. The FIDS is recorded. So whether it's on their ma, I think what Commissioner Blackwelder would like to do is make sure whether it shows up on that online map or not, that it is covered under here. And so that's all it's doing. It's still protected under all of, it's, it's very protected.
Yeah, I, I have no objection. I'm just saying that, we're saying that Maryland Department of Natural Resources maintains it. And, and if they don't, then we're misleading by putting it under a, a list of things that they maintain. That's, I have no objection to being on, on a list. I think that's important, but it just seems to be, it could be in the wrong place if they aren't actually doing that. Someone, someone reads this and they say, oh, the FIDS, I can go to Maryland Department of Natural Resources and get that. Calls them up, they say, I don't know what you're talking about. Then they.
I'm going to make another suggestion, which is just to maps identifying that sentence. So Wildlife Heritage Division or the town of Chesapeake Beach.
This includes and is not limited to, so it may very well be, but.
Yeah, you can, this previous sentence, you could say maps maintained by, or by the town of Chesapeake Beach, which means that since the map is maintained by the town of Chesapeake Beach, then it would be covered.
Um, and actually Calvert County has that as well. So I could add that in as well. Right?
Yes, you could.
Thank you for that suggestion, Sarah.
Does maintain, I'm just, a point of clarification, maintain mean?
They have.
Recorded, stored?
Right. It, it means that they keep them.
Warehouse.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't have to mean they, I mean, they do keep them up, right? And you do maintain your apps by reviewing them. So.
Okay.
They keep them and they look at them every few years to, or update them as needed.
Okay. So is there any for, did we vote on this?
I think I need to, do I need to amend it? I'll just, um, let me just read.
If you don't mind reading it so that I can make sure I have it.
I'd suggest, so I would like to amend my motion under section two to read as follows. Maps identifying these specific habitat protection areas are maintained by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, Maryland DNR Wildlife and Heritage Division, comma, the town of Chesapeake Beach, comma, and the government of Calvert County. And then the rest of my motion remains as I read it before. These areas include but are not limited to A, two hundred and two point seven eight acre forest interior. Oh, what did you say, Kathleen? Two hundred and two acre.
Of forest interior dwelling species.
Habitat. Habitat adjacent to Fishing Creek and Richfield Station subdivision. Do I need to continue reading, Sharon? Okay. So that was my motion and I don't know if it was seconded.
Was it seconded? Are we, any further discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Proceed, Commissioner Blackwelder.
Okay.
Not say page twenty-two.
I might have.
Et tu, n'est-ce pas? Et tu, n'est-ce pas?
I'll try to do this quickly, but on page thirty-three, there's a definition for consistent with. For some reason I started, I haven't, I, I don't know why I started though, so I'm disregard. Okay, on page thirty-six. On page thirty-six, there's, on section B relating to grandfathering. There's a lot of language from the current code that does not appear in this new code. So, like, some of the language is, for example, it says, for which interim findings defined in A eight dash eighteen thirteen of the Natural Resources article annotated code of Maryland have been made by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Appeals, or the Town Council. There's a lot of, there's a lot of if statements. And so the if statements are found in our current code, two ninety dash seventeen C General Regulations, but then that section has been put into here. But it doesn't have those statements. So I don't really, it seems like we're losing some things because it says, but they just, let's see. It says, notwithstanding that such development may be inconsistent with any density provisions of this. Okay. It's an exception for grandfathered lots, but then it doesn't have the same conditions that we currently have. I, I just don't understand what, why we eliminated language, maybe.
With regard to grandfathering, I think that this was what, I, I think this actually Chris put together this section before he left. And it is a section, I don't know if you guys went over it with him or not.
So for example, it says, land that was subdivided into recorded legally buildable lots where the subdivision received final improvement between, approval between June first nineteen eighty-four and December first nineteen eighty-five. And, um, it's missing the whole thing that we have in our current code that says, for which interim findings defined in eight dash eighteen thirteen of the Natural Resources article annotated code of Ma, Maryland have been made by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Appeals, or the Town Council. So is, is there?
I think that's because of the change in the.
What's that?
I think that's because of the change in the Maryland regulations.
Okay, so just basically, we don't need to have any findings. There's, we're just. It says the following types of land are permitted to be developed with a single family dwelling. So we're not going to put any conditions on them. There's no conditions necessary.
So.
None of this language that's in our current code is necessary. Is that what you're saying?
That was the, that was my understanding of the assessment that was done, right?
And the only, so the only places where I would be concerned about this would be lots and subdivisions that were, I, I don't know, they, they used to play this thing where they would bring one site plan, then never build that, then bring a different site plan, and then bring the other one back and say it's being revised. And so there's, um, I don't know. There's Bayview Hills has a section that is grayed out. There, I think a lot of that is up in the air.
Was that approved before December first nineteen?
I don't know. And I, this is way before my time. I don't know where this would apply, how it would apply, what, like, I don't know the reason for that. So I, I, I don't have anything, I had a question. That's really all I have because I don't know anything about it.
Okay, if you, can you tell me where you are specifically in the zoning code?
Our current zoning code that exists now that's not this critical area, it's two ninety seventeen C General Regulations under lots of record.
Okay, so you're talking about C within that. Development may take place on parcels of land recorded prior to June. That's the part that's missing.
Uh huh.
Yeah, C and D, there's some missing language in the new version.
And can I say something? So I've gone back to my other versions, July and September. In the July version, after B, we have C on implementation with one and two under it. But then when we get to the September version, it's like it was colored out with all the rest of it. But I don't, I don't have any notes, so I don't know if it just inadvertently got colored out and it wasn't supposed to be.
I don't have any good answers for this section either.
An answer to that.
I just, um.
So in July, you had the implementation section.
This is. This would be. I mean, it's still only one single family dwelling, but it's not so, so impactful unless somebody made a bunch of lots.
Um, I'm trying to see if I can find.
Yeah.
Is it exactly the same as what's in the current code? Or?
It's really not.
Find the.
What section is that, two ninety?
Two ninety seventeen C.
I'm just going back to that version.
Oh, okay.
Implementation was entirely, I'm pretty sure that, there's one section, and I'm pretty sure it was implementation, that is entirely like in your, oh, no, variances, sorry, that was variances. Apologies.
I mean, did.
Yeah, it's, no, it's not, um, it's not the same as what's in the code. Uh, I'm, I'm looking at it now.
Where else could that have come from?
The land receive, review the building permit subsequent, that's all that. I think, are you, are you into variances?
Sure.
I'm looking at the same document you're looking at now, so.
Two ninety dash seventeen under general regulations.
We're in the current code or the September version of critical area?
Current code is where the language is.
And it's not, it's not in that September version either.
And I'm wondering, what is the significance of that? And do we need to add it back in?
It's, because it's not actually, it's not in that September one. If there's something like different in the September one, are we looking at the same?
Like he, it's like he started on, he started at the top of the page and, and yellowed it out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's been.
That's the implementation he took out, yeah.
Implementation, but.
But those two sections that, um.
Variances he then removed as well.
Right, variance is removed entirely because it's covered in another section of the code. But I think.
That continued.
Yes.
I'm wondering if he just started at the top of the page and he shouldn't have.
Well, if you look at it, the section that Commissioner Blackwelder is referring to is in that September version, it's, there's a section C. So in, in the town's current code, there's two sections that were not also in the model ordinance. That's what I would say. I don't know if they necessarily were removed from a model ordinance because this language is clearly from a model ordinance too that's in your existing. And therefore, it seems that it might have been removed because of the change and the update in the critical area rules. What I can suggest again is for me to co, copy this language out and submit to the Critical Area Commission and say, I, I can, I can research it, but I also, like, what I really want to do is make sure that we're, we're going where we need to go. So I can kind of, sorry. I'm Italian.
Body language.
So if we, if we pull this out and say, hey, we're concerned that this may leave some lots, is there a way to put it back in or can we put it back in? And I'll have a conversation with her to explain why we're, we're sending such a big memo. But.
A forty-page memo.
Do you have it, Sharon?
I mean, we could just.
We could just stick it back in and let them comment on it.
What it reads to me is that Chris went through and got rid of things that were out of date. So when, when you have a sentence that says, uh, it'll be permitted to complete construction, that was when this was written. Uh, construction permits only last, what, a year? So, uh, if they didn't complete construction within that year, then it's OBE anyway. So, and a lot of this relates to, and it says, when the, when the town approves the critical area protection program. So it's in that gray area, be, when they were approving the critical area and they were trying to do this, and all of that.
Yeah.
I think could and should be eliminated.
It, it does seem like that, especially because it's like allowing, it's allowing development, not restricting development. That's the other thing to keep in mind with these two paragraphs that are in here. In the current code that aren't in the new one.
I mean, I'm, I'm struggling to grasp this, so I'm going to have to go with somebody's recommendation on it. It just seems like there's a lot more criteria in the one section, a lot more things that need to be complied with, and they aren't in the other section. So that's just my concern. I don't really have a good answer right now. Highlight it for you.
Well, I just, so to kind of go over C and D in two ninety seventeen, what they're saying is that here are two additional lots that development will be allowed on, and we're removing that. So we're saying, no, development might not be, isn't allowed on these things. It's not permitting, like, just because that seems to be a deciding, um, element is, it's, it's removing a section that can be permitted, and it is referring back to the previous, to the, to the existing critical area regulations. So the model ordinance probably removed it because it covered it elsewhere. Chris probably didn't put it back in because it was covered elsewhere. It would be a big oversight for the model ordinance to miss this, and I don't think they did.
Yeah, if you understand it and it's not creating a problem for you as our planner who will bring us the site plans, um, I'm.
Yeah, especially D, it's clearly like a short, fair-term thing. There, I think they're not relevant. And they're not going to create a takings issue, so I'm comfortable leaving them out if you are.
Okay.
All right. How about let's get to the end? I, I have four other commissioners. That was page thirty-six, is that correct? Okay, so, um, well, Commissioner Blackwelder is looking for her.
No, I'm just making sure that.
Okay. Sarah, all these pages have duplicate numbers, is that, is that just?
Yeah, I did notice that when I ran the.
Okay.
I'll get them off. I was trying to figure it out, but I don't want to.
I just didn't know if it was double number day, and so I just.
I, it, it's showing up, so I can't actually, there's no numbers on my screen, so I think, I didn't think they were there.
Well, you made, you made up for it on these documents because they're, they're doubled, but, you know.
Yes, I will get that out.
Kate, duplicate, it's fine. Commissioner Blackwelder?
Yeah, I think I'm done. I just had a question about thirty-seven.
That wouldn't be done then.
Page thirty-seven, part ten, page thirty-seven. Section B three. It says, the town of Chesapeake Beach may not issue a permit or approval of any type on a property affected by the final written decision or order until after the expiration of the time within which the commission may file an appeal or petition for judicial review. So it's referring to a time for something that I don't even know what it is. So I had a question about that.
We're on three, the town permit approval for property, no, yeah, affected by the final written decision or order until, okay. So we're going to go up to procedure. The applicant seeking a parcel or lot consolidation or reconfiguration shall provide the information required in Comar to the town. The town will not issue a permit until there's a final written decision.
This is on.
On the consolidation of the lot. Or reconfig. Or reconfiguration of the lot.
That's what three is referring to, is lot consolidation, reconfiguration, issuing a permit until it's the time has expired.
Right. So.
Or an appeal. So they just wait till that window?
Right, so we, we can't issue a permit unless there's a final written decision on the consolidation or reconfiguration. Or after it's expired, there's, the time expires for an appeal. So say the commission doesn't actually do a written decision, but you've passed the appeal window. Then the town can issue the permit.
Because the appeal time has expired.
Right, so it can't be like, well, the commission approved it, but whoever's in charge of writing the decision just never did. And then, so the town can't issue a permit. It, yeah, it gives you two ways to deal with that.
Yeah, I just, I just had a question about it. If we needed to write the time, but if you, you understand it.
Yeah, you can't really write the time.
Okay, all right. That's it. I'm done.
Asked and answered. Thank you, Commissioner Blackwelder. Commissioner Brown. Do you have any items for discussion?
No. Uh, what is the, are, are we voting on sending this forward or what?
No, we're seeing if you have any, any items that you would like to be reviewed in this document.
No.
Okay. God love you. Okay. Vice Chair. Vice Chair Greengold.
Hi, Cass, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. But Commissioner Hahn. Fabulous, I do not have any. So do we have a motion to present this forward to the Chesapeake Beach Critical Area, uh, Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Commission? Do we have a, a, uh, motion for that? Need a motion for that? We need approval to send it forward?
I don't know how you normally direct it, Chris. Like, I don't know if you made motions to direct him or not, so.
Usually we determine we're gonna send it forward, make a.
I'll make the motion to send this draft ordinance forward to the critical area.
I have a second. Any discussion?
I understand what Chairman, uh, her concern about other things that may go on if we don't push this through. But I will be voting against it, because I frankly don't see any provisions in this document that are stricter, significantly stricter than the current code. So I don't see where it makes a difference. I will be voting against it.
I understand. Thank you. Any further comment, discussion? We have a second? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you, let's move. Now we will move on to rules of procedure, continuing from last month. Does everybody have their Commissioner Brown's proposed changes to the draft?
If I can interrupt for a second, I've taken those changes and inserted them into the proposed provisions, so people can look at them in the context that they're proposed, so. Let's see.
Well, thank you. And you've highlighted them in green, so we can all see them, even you?
Uh, there are three, three colors highlighted there. I have an extra copy if somebody wants one.
I'm just curious, can you see the yellow highlight?
Under C?
Yes.
And you see all the highlights?
Yes.
But you couldn't see it on the other document?
No.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Um, okay, so the green, the, first of all, the yellow highlights are the ones we approved the last meeting. There are, there are only two.
Yes.
Okay. The green are, uh, my other proposals, proposed changes.
Okay.
And the red at the end is, uh, a suggested deletion. So I haven't deleted, I don't think I've deleted anything from the original document. I've just inserted my proposed changes into this document.
And the, um, the item, uh, under section nine, that's in red, was already in the original document. You just, it's just your recommendation to amend it.
Okay, so we can start there, yes? You see, that sentence says, "All meetings of the planning commission shall be open to the public." But then, under another provision, as, uh, as was presented in the original document, the planning commission may meet in closed session as authorized by the Maryland Open Meetings Act. So seems to me those two statements are in conflict. We say all meetings will be open, but we can't have closed meetings.
Well, I.
So I'm suggesting we delete the sec, the, that sentence that says all meetings will be open to the public. Because earlier we say, "Open meetings will comply with the Maryland Open Meetings Act."
Well, just, uh, I just want to offer that the, in the open meetings, I think all meetings are open to the public, but if, for example, tonight, that the meetings open to the public, but yet we have an item that cannot be discussed in public, then we, at that point, could close the meeting, go discuss that point, then come back, share with the public why we are going into a closed session. Make that determination, then come back, say what we've decided, and then reopen the meeting. And I think we've done that previously, um, during, there were some points during the comprehensive plan, or I, I, I don't remember exactly what were the circumstances, but I, I know that that is a, um, there is that, um, process that we are allowed to close. I think when we had the public hearing, there was one point that we was, we were then discussing the business of the comprehensive plan specifically, and then we closed the meeting and then reopened it. So that, that's my only, um, I guess footnote to that.
Uh, in section six, and it didn't come out very well, six, uh, supposed to say, uh, uh, meetings clo- closed to the public. Closed meetings, and somehow it got messed up. But, uh, it's in green, it's, uh, that's the second part in green. It says, uh, "The planning commission may meet in closed session as authorized by the Maryland Open Meetings Act." So that's under section six, under open meetings. I just thought it was confusing to say all meetings will be open when, uh, we have a provision that you can close the meetings. So. That's my motion to delete that line. Uh, is there a second for that?
No, he's saying, he's saying to.
Uh, the line that's in red or pink.
He's saying this, um, that all meetings of the planning commission shall be open to the public. Well, as I said, they are all open to the public, but there are, there is a, a aspect of the, a facet of the meeting that, depending on what the discussion bears, like, for example, last night with the, the Board of Appeals, they had to discuss what they were gonna do about the motion presented. And so they closed the meeting at that point to deliberate with legal counsel, then come back, and they shared why they were closing the meeting, then.
And that, and that's permitted, that's called for in section six.
But I think, I think in theory, all meetings are open to the public, but I think that, that depending on the nature of the business, some of, there is the potential that part of the meeting could be closed to make a ruling, and then reconvene, so.
Okay, and I'm saying that, uh, under this section, order of business, why do we need to talk about meetings, open meetings, since we have a section about open meetings?
Okay, so I see, you're saying that's redundant to have it in nine, because we said.
Yeah.
All right, we have a second on the motion? Any further discussion? I'm sorry? Yes. Uh, any further discussion? Let's vote. All in favor? Say aye? All opposed? Nay? Thank you.
So since we're talking about open meetings, that's section six on the second page. Uh, I added, uh, a, a sentence at the end of the, uh, proposed sentence that says, "The chair will assign a time limit for citizens' participation, which may be determined by the number of individuals that have signed up to speak. Individuals representing a group or organization may be allowed more time than an individual. However, only one person may speak on behalf of an organization." That, uh, sentence is essentially taken from Calvert, the way Calvert County runs.
Where is that specifically?
Section six, page two.
Okay, yep. Um, there's, um, individuals, Sharon, Commissioner Clerk, uh, Commissioner Clerk, can you see in that section that, uh, that last sentence, individuals, it's missing an I, I, can you glean, glean that it shouldn't have an I there? Yeah, see, the I's missing, an individual. Yeah, so do we need to make that, that correction noted for the ones that we, um, see? Or, yeah, so when you review this, if you, so, there's other places in the document that, uh, a letter has been dropped. So rather than add that for everyone, when you review it, you'll, you'll pick that up, and then I'll, I will review it. And the only other, um, throughout the document, the only other note that I had is that it says, it refers to you as the Commission Clerk as Secretary, and we've already made that, um, revision. So throughout the document, you will now be Commission Clerk. So, um, we have a second for Commissioner Brown's motion regarding the, uh, time limit for citizen participation? Second? Yes.
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
Talking about page two, section six.
This is where he's talking.
Okay, I'm sorry, just.
Any further discussion? Let's vote. All in favor? Say aye? All opposed?
Okay, so I apologize for the letters that are missing. If you've ever tried to edit a PDF, um, uh, it was not friendly to me. Um, okay, so going, going back to page one, um, the, the section is on organization, and, uh, uh, I've added a new paragraph E, uh, called "Review of Procedures." Uh, it says, "During the first scheduled meeting in."
Annuary.
Annuary. "The commission shall annually review its rules and procedures and amend them as necessary. These rules or procedure may be amended by an affirmative vote by a member of four commissioners, provided that uh, should be."
Ten days?
No days prior. We'll do it immediately.
I think it's, uh, I think it's ten days from my origin.
It's thirty days.
Thirty days, okay.
Damn.
Thirty days prior to the date of amendment, a public notice shall be issued and a written description be sent to all members of the planning commission. This, again, is a version of something that's in the Calvert County rules. They allow, uh, for commissioners, since we approve these rules, they don't go to the council. The, the commission can amend its rules and review them on an annual basis to update them and correct them.
I'm just, uh, do we have a second on this motion?
Uh, I want to discuss this.
Well, we need a second.
Second for discussion.
Commissioner Blackwelder? Oh, wait, let me go to Commissioner Hahn for a minute. Patiently waiting.
I don't have anything on E, but when we have a time, I would like to go back to C.
I'm sorry, there's no going back. We are moving forward tonight. Yes, okay, as soon as we discuss this, we'll go back to C. Commissioner Blackwelder?
I always have heartburn about a shall statement that makes the town or commission or anybody do something. Um, and then I also.
So you have a, say that again?
Well, there's a shall statement that's saying that we should annually review our, our procedures, and, and I don't, you know, I think it's a good thing to review our procedures. I would prefer that it doesn't come in the form of a shall statement, um, just so somebody doesn't.
May, do you want may?
Yeah.
Okay.
I like may. Um, and then the other thing that I have heartburn about is the commission making rules for itself without town council input. And that is because the commission is responsible for very serious business of the town. Site plan review is probably one of the biggest responsibilities of a town. And I think that town council should have input. I mean, who, we've all seen some of the haywire stuff that has gone's commission. And I would hate for wrong, and the wrong people aren't here now, but I would hate for the wrong people to end up on this commission, making rules for themselves without town council input. And I would not support a commission making its own rules because of the degree of responsibility. There should be an elected official accountable.
Any, any other comments, discussion? I, I have no, um, I, I think these are the rules and procedures for planning and zoning. I don't think it, it makes our authority any more ominous. Uh, I think everything we do, uh, I think these are inclusive to, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission. I, it strikes me that Commissioner Brown has referred to Calvert County rules and procedures for other meetings, that they're also based on Roberts rules. I don't have a, a problem with us, um, accepting this, um, and I, as I said, I do not believe it changes our responsibility or the import of our work. I think this is just, um, you know, the town council is gonna approve what we do regardless of, uh, whether they see our rules and procedures. Because we make recommendations to them, so. There's no further discussion. Let's vote. Any, no further discussion? All right, all in favor? Say aye? All opposed? Nay? Nay? Commissioner Blackwell, next time you have to say nay.
Okay. Nay.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah. I thought there was something in, in the code that says that we can make our own procedures, but can't find it. All right. Let's see. Moving.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Pardon me. Thank you. Commissioner Hahn?
Mine will be quick. I was comparing my notes to the changes that we approved last time we met. And those updates are not captured in here. So in addition to Commissioner Clerk on C, we also changed approved to provided.
Yeah.
And we changed all the Secretaries to Commissioner Clerk.
Yeah.
And then, that's on that one. And then on the other one that we approved, I didn't see that change either on Section 4.
Yeah. I, I think the last time we approved.
We changed it from two weeks to one week.
Right. And that was the, the first proposed change, number one and number two, did not pass.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. They did not pass. And then the next one was the Commissioner Clerk. And right, this document doesn't reflect that change. It refers to Commissioner Clerk as still as Secretary.
Well, it reflects it in one spot where I didn't go through and make corrections to the other.
You had enough fun with the PDF, I understand. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Okay. Let's see. Trying to move along quickly. Again. Oh, under Section 3, top of page 2, and of course, the pages aren't numbered, but top of page 2, Section 3, Applications. I've added three paragraphs, and those were three paragraphs that were among the 12 that I had on my list. So maybe take them one at a time. So under Applications, it says, "Site plan application shall include a detailed list of all the sections of the Chesapeake Beach zoning code that the applicant has consulted." And I reference Section 290-24B of our town code. Some of these suggestions are based on my experience in the Commission when we had applicants come forward on the day of the hearing with new ideas. And the zoning administrator did not have, hadn't prepared for those. And we went ahead and considered them without knowing what code sections were being affected. And, and we voted to approve something that we later had to rescind because the code did not permit that. So my intention is that applicants would tell us what code sections they've consulted. The zoning administrator would be able to go through and make sure they've consulted the correct codes before the Commission has to, has to look at it. So reason for that paragraph.
And the third one?
The second one is, "The date of the first Planning Commission meeting, where the zoning administrator presents a complete site plan application, shall be the date that the plan is filed with the Commission and the date from which the requirement for approval or rejection is calculated." I believe in Section 290-25A5D, I think it requires us to consider site plans within something like 30 days. But regardless of whether it's 30 days or 60 days, when do you start that, that clock? And if the clock starts whenever they hand it to the zoning administrator, that could be 30 days before we have a chance to get it. And so my thought is that applicants submit it to the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator then gives us two weeks' advance notice to look at it before our meeting. And at the meeting then, it is, as the Nuclear Regulatory Commission would say, docketed. And that would be the date that it gets, the time clock starts.
And the last?
And the last one. "No Commission decision should be brought to a vote until every Commissioner has received and has had at least two weeks to review the issue or application and all supporting documents, including the town staff report." So it's a follow-on to trying not to get surprised in doing things on the fly.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion? The only thing I want to say is I think that makes all great sense, especially about starting the clock when the application actually hits the Planning and Zoning Commission, because you're exactly right. The town planner could have the document for 30 days and, you know, and then we get it and it needs to, the clock does need to start with us. My only comment is that would, would there be any instance where we would have to make a decision? We would have to do a review in under two weeks? And should there be that variance to do that? I mean, to stay to two weeks as, as best we can. But if needed, you know, we, we need to be about sometimes, not to be hasty, but we also need to move along. So that's my only comment.
I would say that the Commission can make exceptions to its rules when it wants to. But the purpose of these rules is to inform the public of how we operate. And so the public to be advised that they need to get it into the zoning administrator, give us two weeks to look at it before the clock starts on there, as the town code says, for however many days. So that they understand that. Then if we want to make an exception to that, I think.
Commissioner Weaver?
I'm just wondering if this section, though, contradicts anything anywhere else that, that already has given us a standard that we have to follow?
Well, that's why I put the references in where it applies to our, our code. Let me open up 290-25A5D and see what that says.
Well, the Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't have rules and procedures previously. So there wouldn't be a conflict with that.
Well, just if.
You mean other?
Yeah. If the, if the town document has said, this is like, do we get to, do we get to say, oh, we're not starting our clock until?
I understand.
But that's an amendment to the zoning ordinance, though, Larry, right? As well?
That's what I was wondering if it would be.
Yeah. Madam?
Madam Chair?
Vice Chair?
Green goal? I would like to ask Sarah if, what is, what do you think about these changes? Or, you know, inclusions?
I, I don't think there's necessarily a problem with them. I'm, I'm actually scanning quickly right now to see if there's any time restraints in the zoning ordinance, and I'm not seeing any.
You mean as far as in compliance with Commissioner Weaver's remark?
I wouldn't want to make a final decision based on my scanning it at a meeting. But it does say, the only thing I found right now is the Planning Commission shall approve, conditionally approve, reject, or reject a site plan within 60 days from the filing of the application.
The Planning and Zoning Commission will accept or reject, you said? 60 days?
This Section 25A5D has to do with category two site plans that would typically be approved by the zoning administrator but have to come to the Planning Commission because they're in the critical area.
Right.
But that section.
What section are you in? 295?
290-25A5T.
It's for critical area site plans.
That are category two.
Yes. But that's the only place I'm, you know, quickly seeing any numbers.
Right. That's the only time period I saw on that whole, I read that like 10 times.
Admitted it to memory, have you? B. Where did B go? 290-25B, right?
You could just, in your rules, say unless, unless otherwise restricted by ordinance.
I don't have.
Okay. You don't say, okay, good. I should like use that. I just, if, if that's saying that we have 60 days from the filing of the application, that this, but our rules and procedure is saying that's the requirement for approval or rejection. Hasn't that, hasn't that date already been calculated by, based on when they file? Like, we don't?
He's giving us more time.
Are we allowed to give ourselves more time if it contradicts what?
Right. We would have to amend the zoning ordinance in order to do that.
Or you could say, in your rules, unless there is a conflict with, you know what I mean? You can say, this is our procedure unless there is a ordinance that conflicts with it.
Right. But then we just confuse ourselves and go over the time period.
Yeah. I feel, yeah. I feel like to make sure whatever our plan is, keeps us well within our time. Feels the best.
By the way, we did not go over any time that that appeal is alleging. There is no time in our code for reviewing those site plans.
Okay.
Category one. The only time in our code.
Is for?
Is for category two.
Well, and in that same section, category two section, it talks about appeals and that a decision we made within 30 days of the request to humble places where, and also, we'll get to it here in a minute. There's a section under the Board of Appeals that says they can apply to us for an advisory opinion and that we have to provide it within. So we need to establish what, when it starts. And maybe that requires going to the Town Council and asking them to amend the code to establish when the start date is, but amped up. Now, 30-day scenario, as it says here, for us for expiration, or us for extension within 30 days. Day after one of our meetings, the town administrator gets it, then we have our next meeting and we've got one day to make the decision.
Right. That is, definitely needs to be fixed.
All right.
So that's what I'm trying to do. I don't know if that satisfies everybody, but that's the objective.
But you would have to also make motion. I don't think we can approve 290-25 in the instance of the one in order to make the changes, like what Rachel is saying.
Well, you have to.
Can't make the rules of procedure, make us miss a deadline.
You have to define what filing date. Yeah. That wouldn't have to.
That only says, but see, that has very specific instructions of what constitutes filing for those categories, doesn't for category one.
Right.
Right. So what Rachel is saying is if our rules and procedures conflict, oh, we can't have.
A filing date is.
I'm perfectly.
Do we have a motion?
I have a mo, I made the motion.
We have a second?
What is the motion, though?
The motion is for these, we'll take them one at a time. The first, the first sentence in green at the top of page 2, "A site plan application shall include a detailed list of all sections of the Chesapeake Beach zoning code that the applicant has consulted."
We have a second? All in favor? Any? Vice Chair? Green goal?
I'm sorry. Does that seem onerous to a lot of small homeowners who would have a detailed list of sections of the zoning code?
Well, as.
If you go to the site plan preparation, 290-24, it lists 19 things that the, the applicant has to include.
And also the codes themselves.
Ask them to list the sections of the code they consulted.
I'm just asking Sarah, because she then would have to help them do all the listing. I mean, it's, you know, some of the work would have to fall on the planning administrator.
But she, not to speak for the town planner, although I'm going to speak for the town planner. She had said earlier that she would assist, she assists individuals with their site plans. Is that correct?
Yes. It might be possible to kind of just create. I'm contemplating ways to make this easier for homeowners. And, and what you're suggesting.
Contemplating what?
Ways to make, make it easier for homeowners.
Oh, okay.
And there's a lot swirling in my head that's not formulated into anything.
But we can't say right now.
That, that is, but I think there's a way to make what you're suggesting fit in to all of that. So I, I don't think it would be, I don't think it has to be onerous, if that makes sense. And you're not adopting these tonight, so that gives us time to think about it.
Well, we are making a motion to approve them, so.
Oh, you can always vote. No.
Well, I, it, it's not me who's going to be handling all the work. Sarah is. So I just want to make sure that she's on board with it and she thinks it's a good idea.
It sounds like in the past, things have been approved that shouldn't have been. And, you know, maybe, maybe it should be in the procedures, maybe it shouldn't be in the procedures. But I think, I think the intent behind this is in line with my thinking for how to make things easier. And so hopefully, we're kind of going to all be on the same page at the end, and it's not going to be onerous for anyone.
I mean, my vision is that a homeowner wants to do something. He goes to the administrator anyway and gets advice on what he has to do to apply for the permit and, and do all that stuff. And hopefully, she could direct him to the right zoning code sections. But if perchance, they miss one, like the critical area regulations or something, if it hasn't been, if the homeowner hasn't consulted that, it'd be nice for us to know that.
Any further discussion? Let's vote. Let's vote, all in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
All right, and the, uh, second one is probably, I guess, more controversial. The date of the first planning commission meeting where the zoning administrator presents a complete set of site plan applications shall be the date that the plan is filed with the commission and the date from which the requirement for approval or rejection is calculated.
We have a second? Question?
Sure, that you're good with this as far as the, the planning department?
I don't see any problems with it. We can ask staff, internal office staff, for their opinion.
There currently a definition anywhere filing an application in our code presently.
I don't believe it has a definition to, you, no, sorry. I think it's just, once the application is, is turned into, you know, they get an application in the office, they accept it. And, and that would be the filing, right? Once it's complete and accepted in its complete form. Yeah.
But you, you don't have a finite, do you, as a town planner, have a finite amount of days to review that and get it to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I don't.
Did 30 days?
I don't think there are any.
Right.
And a lot of times, they don't come in complete, so that it's.
It goes back and forth before.
That's, that's the question, what constitutes, what, what documentation exists to verify a filing? Proper filing or an accepted filing?
That is something that we're working on internally to.
It does not exist right now.
No, but it will shortly.
Yes, for obvious reasons.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would imagine when you receive it initially, there's some record of that, but it, it seems to me, once the application is complete, that it's gone through you. The clock should begin once it comes, I mean, the, right. The clock should start as far as the review with planning and zoning. Because, I mean, that's, the application, whether it goes back and forth five times, it's immaterial. They, I mean, except for, I filed this on this date was the initial filing, but until it goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission, I would think that's when the clock would start as far as review.
I would agree.
To me, it seems like if I were filing something, I would think my file date was when my completed application was accepted, not when it came to the planning and zoning, like, because I can't control.
Accepted by whom?
By the, by the.
It would be town staff. It's, it's not actually me that takes them in.
It's a completed application, that seems to indicate you have filed what it takes us to do to break, like, they don't have any control of that, they only have control over filing their thing. And then, once they've done what they need to, that feels like when our clock starts, not once it gets to us.
Right, the thing about the filing thing. Municipalities need to be on a timeline in which they make the development decisions. But a municipality ox in which, what if we don't have a forum? What if, there, there's a lot of reasons, nobody would ever try to do the converse would put the municipality at risk of not being able to responsibly review a site plan. Worse than, I, I think the deference needs to go to the municipality on behalf of the whole, rather than individual applicant. I understand what you're saying, you, you want to have a, a fair system for all.
I would just think, again, that that goes beyond, like, that seems to be more of a code thing beyond this to say how that's all done. And then we need, and then if that needs to change to be more than 60 days, that makes sense. But it just seems to me, can't redefine what filing is to that extent to, to when something comes to the commission is not the same as when somebody files. And to try to change that definition doesn't seem like.
But the fi, the filing, I could file an application with, give it to the town planner tomorrow. But if she looks at it and says, I'm sorry, you, you don't have A, B, and C, so the filing date really can't be, that, that can't be the accurate filing date. But then, when it's finally complete, all she, all the town planner is saying is, you've got everything you need. Now it can go for review, it is, is complete application. And now it can, so to my mind, the review should start when the application is complete and then it's received by planning and zoning. Because you're looking to planning and zoning for approval.
Right, you would have to file.
I'm just wondering if there's a gap.
Planning and zoning on a meeting date, is what Larry's saying. Like, you can't officially file.
Till it comes before the town.
There's a meeting to file it in.
What happens if it is presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and it's incomplete?
But that doesn't happen, right?
I mean, they, the zoning administrator has given us, she thought it was complete. We had other questions that we thought were germane and needed to be answered before we could consider it. What happens then? We have a 30-day window or 60-day window to get it done.
I mean, that depends on what the code already is. And, I mean, all of that just seems like it has to be then defined as, as when a complete filing has happened. And if it, I mean, I don't know, those hypotheticals.
So, do you, so does a town planner, let's say, okay, I file, I get, I file the application, we go back and forth, it's now complete. Our, the planning and zoning next meeting will be December 15th. So that application, tick tock at the next December 15th meeting for the planning and zoning according to this. Is that right?
Yes, I, I think what, what you're trying to do is find this balance between if tomorrow a complete application comes in, you guys might not have enough time to review it versus we make somebody wait indefinitely, right?
Right, but the, the date that, that actually starts, the clock, is selected by the next time the planning and zoning commission will meet, correct? That, that's what this is saying, that we start that clock December 15th at the next meeting. But in, in theory, suppose that meeting is then canceled because we don't have a quorum?
Right, then I think, if I, that's, that's the problem, right? Because you, I, I know that someone had suggested that people wouldn't do that, but people do do that.
Well, they get sick, you know?
No, people do intentionally do that. So I, I think the point is made that, okay, the clock maybe starts ticking on December 15th, you didn't have a quorum. You're going to have to figure out how to have a special meeting because your clock is ticking. I think that creates that balance between the two concerns.
Can I say something? I think we're all, we all have good intentions. For me, and my thought process, it would be, they're not filing, they're submitting a packet for technical review to make sure everything is included in this packet. We all will look at the document to make sure we have no questions that we need technically answered before we then start reviewing to make a decision. So, when, my understanding of your thing is you consider that I'm bringing this and I'm going to submit it and I'm now filing it and the timeline starts. But then she's going to review it, the planner's going to review it and say, oh, well, you forgot this. So, I, we can't do anything until you do this. And then they're going to wait until you bring that. So if you have to bring something to add to it, is that really supposed to be considered in whatever the timeline is determined? No, so then it's not a complete packet for it to be considered for us to review it.
I'm just saying that when that complete packet happens, when they do it, and I think that submission seems like if it ends up at a judge level, that is possibly when they would consider a filing date versus us saying, well, we have defined filing date as the time when we got it as commissioners. I mean, I don't know that, but that seems like.
I can understand why an applicant would, would feel that way. But who defines complete? Who defines that the package is complete and is ready for a, a decision by the commission? I think the commission defines when it's complete, when all our questions are answered. When all the data that we're expecting.
We get to say that.
I don't, I. Be able to get to say that, I believe.
But I don't think that, I don't think we determine that the application is complete. I think the town planner gives it to the commission and we, we, that's a completed package. There, we don't decide if it's complete, we decide if it's approved or not. We don't decide it's com, complete, that's the role of the town planner. To determine that the package has everything it needs for a review.
The, the zoning ordinance actually identifies what the category one and category two site plans require. So, it's defined here, and then it does say other information required. And, and we are intern, we, we just had a meeting prior to this meeting to talk about creating a form that will identify everything that needs to be in there. So I think that will assist in defining complete. As if everything's not there, then it's not everything you guys need. And I think the 60 days gives you, right, so if we start the clock at the next planning commission after it was meeting, after it was approved, and you have that first meeting to look at it and ask questions, have the questions come back, right? And then you have a second meeting 30 days from that one to consider.
This is for category two site plans, so they should be very simple.
They should be very simple, they shouldn't require multiple meetings.
Category one site plans do not have such a limit.
I didn't see a time limit for them, so.
Any more discussion? We have a second? Let's vote. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Commissioner Brown?
Okay, um, it's nine o'clock, some people have small children at home.
They're asleep.
All right, the, the last subparagraph under applications is no commission decision should be brought to a vote until every commissioner has received and has had at least two weeks to review the issue or application and all supporting documents, including the town staff report.
We have a second? Discussion? Let's vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? No opposed? All right, Commissioner Brown?
Okay, um, the next one is section five, quorum. This is right out of our code, so, um, let's see. From the, this one.
Four commissioners, that's what it's supposed to be, four commissioners present at the meeting shall constitute forum. No action of the commission shall be valid unless authorized by a majority for a vote of the total allowed. Seven members of the commission, no decision of the planning commission shall be final until the written decision of the commission is signed and filed. We have a second? Discussion? Let's vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed? Commissioner Brown?
Okay, uh, on page three at the top, I think this is.
We know there's new pages.
It's a, a new section, which have to be numbered appropriately. The Board of Appeals may request an advisory opinion from the Planning Commission on application for special exceptions, variances, and interpretations. If an advisory opinion is requested from the commission regarding special exceptions, variances, and interpretations, the opinion shall be rendered within 30 days after the submission to the commission. That's right out of the town code. Thought you'd like to know that.
Love it. We have a second? Discussion?
The only point I'd make is perhaps the Board of Appeals needs tomorrow, ask for an advisory opinion. Just altering it in the same way or did the other one?
Further discussion?
So it'd be something along the lines of the date of the first planning commission meeting. After receiving the request for an advisory opinion, shall be the date that the plan, that the.
Date? Date that the plan is filed with the commission and the date from which the requirement for approval or rejection is calculated.
And 30 days after first meeting?
The day, the date at which the, the first meeting after the rendered within 30 days of the first meeting after, uh, 30 days. 30 days. First meeting after submission thieve at the first meeting of the commission.
30 days.
30 days after.
Following submission. That's coming out of, it's missing the letter, because it's 290.
Is it 290, 24? 290, 25A?
Or 290, 32K?
90, 32K?
Uh, that comes out of the Board of Appeals code.
2K. Okay. View by the Planning Commission on applications for a special exception, variances, interpretation. The board may request an advisory opinion from Planning Commission. If the advisory opinion is requested from the commission regarding special exceptions, the opinions shall be rendered within 30 days after submission to the commission.
Right out of the code, I don't know.
Yep, that's 290, 32K.
Correct.
So is there any further discussion? Has it been seconded? Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed? All right. Commissioner Brown? Is that section nine, order of business?
Yeah, order of business, section nine. I put in a sentence at the beginning, consideration of properly submitted and complete category one site plan applications shall take precedence over all other commission business.
Something 1A?
Uh, 31A6.
31... 6. Review and approve category one site plans in accordance with the provisions of Article 6. For all category one site plans submitted for review, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall submit written notice to the applicant by first-class mail, such to be postmarked at least 10 days before the day of the meeting to discuss the site plan, and submit written notice to all owners of property adjoining and immediately across the street from the subject property. Such written notice shall state the date, time, place, and subject matter of the meeting to discuss the site plan and the name of the applicant. Such notice shall be sent by first-class mail and be postmarked not less than 10 days before the day of the meeting.
So with all of that notice and preparation, uh, I'm suggesting that those site plans should take precedence over other commission business. It would be the first thing on the agenda. Push to the end.
Second, um, do we have a second for this?
Question?
You have a second? Has this been seconded?
I'll second with discussion.
Okay.
Um, I disagree with this addition. We have to manage its workload. So if, say we have, uh, we have three appeals. Category one site plan, say we have this.
You don't think this...
Should not be having ourselves in on a category one site plan to have it take priority over all commission business.
Oh, we could have a category two site plan in front of us that...
We might want to knock out.
Right, but, well, also, it seems unfair. I mean, I understand the priority of the category one, but if my site plan for category two is in, is scheduled on next month, and all of a sudden the category one, now I've gotta go after that, that doesn't seem fair to me, but...
Didn't, haven't you all said that the category twos have limits, time limits, that category ones don't? So we kind of would have to do the category twos.
Only in the critical area.
They have less flexibility.
Only in the critical area.
Only because you are the approving authority, not in the critical area. But regardless, planning commissions manage their workload. It's not, it's, it's for the health and welfare of the entire town. It's not, you know, and, and you always do try to be fair, but can't be on a developer's schedule. A developer wants everything now, and you can see, a developer might file five site plans, and there might be a lot of business in front of the commission. Not necessarily prioritize, uh, certain things above other things, that's, that's a judgment call, I think. But with that...
So the category two site plan in a critical area has a timeline, but other, if it's not in the critical area, it doesn't have a timeline? All right, any further discussion?
And a category one site plan can take multiple meetings to complete.
That's, I could be said about anything.
When you think about it, I mean, it was ridiculous. We approved a revision for 14 extra hotel rooms and, um, in a...
Game room.
In a double, a game room that doubled in size in one day. That was so inappropriate. And that, that should never happen again. Nothing like that should ever happen again. Um, and then when you get a big site plan, there are a lot of questions, there are a lot of considerations. You cannot put yourself or a category one site plan on a developer's timeline. It's not fair to the commission.
Any further discussion?
So, so how's that gonna work? We have, we've said that the agenda will come out seven days in advance, but 10 days before the meeting, the town has to send notices out to the public and to the category one applicant that it's going to happen on, at that meeting. So, so what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
I think we're talking about two different things, so I'm fine with agendaizing. I did to take up in that meeting. I would say, there's a category one site plan, there's a big category two site plans as a Board of Appeals. Prioritize the category one site plan over all of those other things.
Maybe, um, it's, uh, well, maybe the clarification that needs to be done also is that, um, a site plan could take, can, what do you think about this? Can a site plan take precedence over just commission business, which is just agenda items, but not site plans? So if it's not a site...
Yeah, site plans in general come first on the agenda?
Site plans come first, or, or a Board of Appeals exception, but they would knock down, but other agenda items like our regular agenda, they would have precedence over, a site plan would have precedence or, or, uh, Board of Appeal would have...
Routine business.
Pardon me? Yes. Right, so the site plan and a Board of Appeals variance would have priority over commission business.
I would, I would agree with that, but not signaling out our workload.
What happens when, because it feels a little like painting the Golden Gate Bridge to me with having to update the comprehensive plan, feels like within those legal guidelines, right? Isn't it like in, don't you have to have it redone in seven years? And it took like three years this time? It's, uh, I'm just saying, it will be like right around the corner when a comprehensive plan is happening, and then, and then are you prioritizing the site plans over the comprehensive plan just because that became an issue?
Then you have the moratorium.
Yeah, right, and that's exactly why we...
So like, is it worth putting in any language in this if we don't necessarily want to rein ourselves into that?
I think it shows...
And that's a very good point as well, Rachel. It's, it's, a municipality would decide when the right time to receive large development projects would be. They would need to remain in control of that, so I, I support your idea as well.
But I, I think, as opposed to Commissioner Weaver's idea, with us saying that the site plan or the Board of Appeals takes precedence, I think it shows the, the weight of those documents for the Planning Commission, which I think is important to, to say. I think the, the comprehensive plan, absolutely, um, that's exactly why we had a moratorium, because we didn't feel we could do justice to a site application along with a comprehensive plan, and...
But we didn't do the moratorium.
The town council did the moratorium. We only offered it as a...
I would just say, uh, moving, moving site plans down the road because we think it interrupts, uh, we want to do it next January instead of in December, subjects us to litigation. I haven't used that word much in this, in this venue here, but there are, uh, Anne Rondell County has been litigated against for delaying approval of building permits and site plans.
All developers.
So, I'm just saying, you can't just willy-nilly say, well, it's January of 26th that we want that facility, so go back.
Well, that, I think everybody needs to keep in mind that developers litigate, because it's in their best interest to litigate, but that doesn't mean that you rashly accept development that is going to be permanent in your town at a time when you are not ready to accept it, and...
You don't have to approve it, but you have to consider it. You have to, you have to make a decision, yes or no, but you can't say, we're, we don't want it now, so we're, we're not gonna consider it for another year.
Is accepting site plans from years ago right now, it's not unusual. It really is not unusual.
And they, they're doing that because they decided they didn't want to consider it, and the, and the developer says, no, I want it, but they, whoever it is you're talking about...
Their process, I don't know what their exact process is, but they...
Well, we need facts. If you're gonna present an example, we need a fact so we can discuss the elements of them.
Well, before we hem ourselves in to how we prioritize things, maybe we should do something else.
What, uh, what you've asked to change was that consideration properly submitted and complete category one site plan applications shall take precedence over commission routine business.
Well, it should, um, I believe it should be modified to say, um, complete site plans and Board of Appeals exceptions shall take precedence over other commission business.
I think the word routine is important, but then that's also subjective. Is comprehensive planning routine? Is this routine? Is that routine?
I just say, I would say business. I wouldn't say routine, because what, what is routine subjective?
Right, so, but now, by your saying that, you're saying all business.
I'm, well, I'm saying, well, what I'm trying to say is that the priority should be given to site plans and variances.
I'm saying that we probably shouldn't codify that.
I would see, I'm withdrawing my motion. It's, uh, there's too much controversy. Um, and moving on to the last page, uh, it's after section 14 and before section 15, I've written one that says, annual report, the zoning administrator shall prepare and present to the commission an annual report at the beginning of each year for the commission's consideration and approval in accordance with the provisions of the land use article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, section 29031A.
We have a second? We have a...
I'll second. I'd like Sarah's thoughts on the shall. I'm, I think that's a requirement anyways of some sort.
I think it's fine to say shall, yeah.
It's section nine of the Planning Commission, says, prepare and adopt an annual report in accordance with the provisions of Land Use Article, blah, blah, blah.
Any further discussion? Let's vote. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Say nay? And, is that it?
That's it.
I thought there was one...
That's it for me. Now, someone proposed this whole document, I didn't propose the document. Um, I proposed amendments to somebody.
Um, I thought there was one more that said, talking about officers, um, shall elect a chair from its membership at the first meeting of the Planning Commission every calendar year. That's, that's not what we do, we, we usually wrote on the new, um, chair in June.
I believe all it says is every year, let's see.
Every calendar year, at the first meeting of the Planning Commission every calendar year. Well, the first meeting of the calendar year would be January.
You're talking, that's in here?
Yep.
I didn't write that.
Well, I, I'm just saying, it says the election shall occur annually at the first meeting of the Planning Commission every calendar year. The, the first meeting of the Planning Commission every calendar year, um, first meeting would be January.
Yeah, the town, the town code says the commission shall elect a chairman from one of its appointed members and create and fill such other offices as it may determine. The term of the chairman shall be one year with eligibility for reelection, so it doesn't say at the beginning of the year or any specific time.
Well, should we change that to say, or should we start voting in January? All right, so I make a motion that... sentence the election shall occur, well, we'll put the election shall occur annually every, every calendar year. We have a second? All in, any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Okay.
I would like to move adjournment.
I second it.
Why, that was the fastest second we've ever had.
It is 9:30. No, it's 9:30.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I just want to say, um, happy Thanksgiving to all.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.
It's early this year.
We go to 11.
Yeah, we're not...
This is really working out well.
Longer meetings.